Called order, Town of Prescott Valley, study session, April 3rd, 2025, Clerk of Police, follow the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Councilmember Keel.
President.
Councilmember Freund.
Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Vice Mayor Searcher.
Here.
Mayor Poguda.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Davidson is 2A, are we still going with 2B first, or did the people make it here for 2A?
Mayor, we're good to go in the same order.
All right. First up, CDBG program and initial consolidated plan and annual action plan. Ms. Robinson, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the wonderful honor of speaking with you this afternoon regarding several items that are on your agenda from Neighborhood Services. I first want to kind of go back in time a little bit. We had a conversation sometime June of last year where we talked in detail with council regarding housing services and CDBG and a litany of other things regarding some of the new items that were on the list for Neighborhood Services. And I am very pleased to say that we have done a lot of work in the past year in reference to each of those programs. And so this afternoon, we're going to have several consultants that are going to speak to you regarding some of the efforts that we have made regarding those programs, some needs assessments and things of that nature. At this time, however, I want to introduce to you Tracy Lyra, who is our Deputy Director for Neighborhood Services. And she is going to be introducing each of those consultants to kind of talk about where we are, not only with our Arizona Department of Housing Grant, but where we are with our Community Development Block Grant Program as well. Tracy?
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm Tracy Lyra. As a new entitlement community for the Community Development Block Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the town is working on our first consolidated and annual action plan. The town has contracted with TDA Consulting to complete this plan and is estimated to receive $294,000 annually from this grant. Over the next few months, you'll be hearing from our TDA Consulting regarding this plan. Today's presentation is about CDBG program and its eligible spending opportunities to better inform you for future conversations. With that, I want to introduce you to Jennifer from TDA Consulting.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, Tracy, and thank you, Mayor, and members of council. We're really grateful to be here. TDA Consulting is a national consulting firm. We've been providing housing and community development assistance to communities across the country for over 25 years. And so we're really excited to be working with the Town of Prescott Valley, especially on its very first consolidated plan and first allocation of CDBG funds. As, that's my name, as Tracy mentioned, I'm Jennifer. I'm leading this project, but we have a team of folks that are helping us. So for this presentation, we just want to share a little bit of information about the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, in the world of HUD alphabet soup, and just kind of explain the consolidated planning process, because it is a really technical process, and we just want to make sure everybody understands how it works. So we're going to talk about what is CDBG, what is the consolidated plan, and then we're going to go over a little bit about how we develop that plan using data and community outreach, and then let you know what the next steps are, so you can know what to anticipate. So CDBG was enacted in 1974, and it is one of the most beloved HUD programs, because it is a pretty flexible program. There is still a lot of rules and requirements and eligible uses, but it does allow communities to do a lot to better their community in a variety of areas. So it is one of the longest-running and one of the most popular even with Congress. So funds are given to local communities to do things like affordable housing, anti-poverty programs, and infrastructure development. These programs all must benefit low-to-moderate-income people and low-to-moderate-income areas, and we're going to explain what that means in just a moment. But that's a really important part to keep in mind, because you have to benefit those types of people and those types of areas. It can't primarily, and we're going to talk more about those nuances. You can also use it, though, to aid in the prevention of and elimination of blight, such as in neighborhood revitalization projects. And in some cases, you can use it to meet urgent needs if those were to arise, like natural disasters. So how do you figure out that you're going to get CDBG dollars? So it's all part of an allocation process. It starts with Congress. Every year, Congress decides whether or not it's going to fund the CDBG program and how much it's going to give HUD to allocate across all the jurisdictions that are entitlement communities and allowed to receive these dollars. So HUD now has the amount that CDBG will be funded at for this upcoming year from Congress, and it is working through the process of allocating those dollars across all of its communities using a formula. So CDBG is one of the programs that we call a formula grant, because that's how people figure out how much they're going to get by applying this formula. And the formula takes into consideration things like the extent of poverty, population, whether there's overcrowding in housing in the community, the age of the housing stock, and whether there's been population growth in relationship to other metropolitan areas. So that's the formula that's been, that gets applied, and, as you all know, you've been deemed eligible now to receive CDBG, which is really exciting for your community. So the next few slides are going to have examples of eligible uses of CDBG funds. It's important to understand that you don't have to do all of these things. These are just some of the things that you can do, and each community has to decide which mix of CDBG-eligible activities makes sense for their community's needs, and, to be honest and transparent, their staff capacity and their ability to carry out these programs, right? Because there are a lot of community needs, and you can address them in a lot of different ways. So we're going to take a look here about, at the different eligible activities, and then I'll show you a short list of ineligible activities, just so you have a sense of what that looks like, too. So you can acquire real property. You can also relocate and do demolition. You can use the funds for rehabilitation of residential and non-residential structures. You can use the funds to construct things like public facilities and improvements, or to improve those facilities and improvements, such as water and sewers, streets, sidewalks, community centers, libraries, things like that. You can also use it for public services, but there is a public services cap, so you can only use 15% of your grant for public services. And that's something really important to remember, because a lot of times, people get excited about using CDBG for services, because there's so many needs. But there is a cap on the amount of money you can use on services in the CDBG program, and it's 15% of your grant. You can also use it for activities relating to energy conservation or renewable energy resources. And then there is a component that includes economic development, so assisting low-to-moderate-income business owners with economic development and job creation and retention activities. So as you can see, that's a really broad gamut of things that you can do with CDBG. Some of the things you can't do, you cannot do acquisition, construction, or reconstruction of buildings for the general conduct of government. So you can't build a new city hall with your dollars, right? You can't use it for political activities, of course. There are certain types of income payments that aren't eligible, and you cannot use it to construct new housing, new affordable housing, with some exceptions. So most people just kind of stay away from trying to use CDBG in affordable housing development when it comes to new construction. So that's what you can do with the money, but who can you serve with these dollars? So as I mentioned before, you have to use the money for low-to-moderate-income beneficiaries. And so over a one, two, or three-year period, and grantees get to choose which period they want to be evaluated within, whether it's year-by-year, every two years, or every three years. But during that period that you choose, not less than 70% of your CDBG dollars have to be used towards serving low-to-moderate-income people, okay? So that's sort of the low-mod benefit test, is what we call that. And that is, low-to-moderate income is defined as 50% for low income, 50% of area median income, and 80% of area median income for moderate income. So if you're doing something like a services program, we have to make sure that everybody receiving services that are funded by CDBG, they're not making more than 80% of the area median income, right? Then with respect to things like infrastructure projects, so if you're replacing sidewalks or building sidewalks, or if you're using the money for a facility like a library or a community center, there, we're looking at the area where that work is being done. And we want to make sure that that area is a low-mod area. And what that means is that at least 51% of residents in that area are low-to-moderate-income people, okay? So we're always making sure we're staying within this low-to-moderate-income benefit test. So that's a little bit about the CDBG program, a super-fast 101. The next step in, once you find out that you're going to get CDBG dollars, you have to start thinking about your consolidated planning process. Think of the consolidated plan as a strategic plan. It's done every five years. It's the place where you set out what your needs are in your community, and you translate those needs into goals. And so those goals that you develop for that five-year period are going to guide your funding allocations for the next five years as you do your annual plans. So think of consolidated planning as strategic planning, annual planning as more like implementation, okay? So your consolidated plan will be implemented yearly through those annual plan processes, and there are some similarities in terms of the process. But what's different with the consolidated plan is that there's a very intense needs assessment process in the consolidated plan years, because that's when you're doing your strategies. And so while the consolidated plan and annual plan have similarities in that they both require a public comment period, so both plans, types of plans have to be published for a 30-day public comment period every time, and you have to do community outreach every time, the consolidated plan brings in more of that needs assessment aspect. So right now, we're working on the development of a consolidated plan for the 2025 through 2029 con-plan cycle. And this is actually a pretty common con-plan cycle. There's a lot of people out there doing their con-plans right now. And then the 2025 annual action plan. So when you do a con-plan, you're always doing your first-year annual action plan at the same time. So the types of things that we look at when we're developing the consolidated plan are a lot of data. So HUD gives us a template, so we're not dreaming up our consolidated plan on our own. HUD actually gives us a template that we have to complete, and that template has some data sources that we use. We add additional data sources to better understand the community needs. We add things like maps to better demonstrate where areas of poverty are, where the older housing stock is, things like that, so you can get a visual. And then the other really important part of con-plan development is the community input. So there's been a lot of work done over the last few months on community participation, and we're really excited about all of that's been done by the other consultants, and so we're leveraging all that information from the survey, community meetings, and things like that to build out the consolidated plan. And then you take all this information that you've gathered, and you put it into a list of priority needs. And so these needs are often much greater than we can meet by using CDBG dollars, unfortunately. And so we have to prioritize them, and so that's what we do. And then we translate those into the goals, and as I mentioned, those goals are going to guide your funding decisions over the next five years. So in 2027, when you get your annual allocation, you're going to look back to those five-year plan goals that we're making now, and then decide how to spread that allocation across the goals that are in the consolidated plan. And then each year, as part of this process, you are doing reporting on progress. So this is called a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or a CAPR. And so every year, staffer will have to be working on a CAPR to submit to HUD, so you're going to hear about those in the coming years as well. And so where we're at right now is continuing to collect that community input. We are doing one-on-one stakeholder interviews with some additional categories beyond the meetings that have already been held, just because there are some very specific things that the con-plan template asks us to respond to. So we're still reaching out to some folks through interviews. And of course, we're working with staff on the overall strategy development to draft this list of priority needs and goals, so that it's a, it's a good list of goals that are program-eligible, of course, but also help to meet the needs in the ways that are most efficient and effective for the use of CDBG dollars. Because as I said, your needs are always going to be this big, and CDBG is only this big, so where do we plug it in? So that's what we'll be working on. And then the plan gets published for a 30-day public comment period, as I mentioned. So we're not sure when HUD is going to allocate, announce the allocations for each community. As I said, they have the, they have the CDBG dollar figure now, but we don't know when they're going to tell everybody what individual communities will be receiving in the 2025 year. It is getting later and later all the time, and I heard a rumor today that it might not come until May, but we're not sure yet. We should have had it already, but that hasn't happened in a long time. So we can't submit the plan to HUD until we get the allocation. So we can keep working on the plan, though, and we'll have it developed. We can even put it out for public comment without that final dollar amount. We can put an estimate with some contingency language that says, if it's more or less than this, we'll adjust the goals proportionately. So that's something we can do to keep the process moving, but we don't know what the final allocations will be, and then when we get them, we can finally submit the plan to HUD. HUD does have 45 days to review the plan. So they'll take that time to review it, and then give us comments, fix things we need to, and then, once it's approved, you get your grant agreement. Well, that's the process. I know, real super-fast 101.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, any questions in reference to this? Councilman Williams?
As I mentioned to you, Mayor, I think I'll wait till after the second presentation, since they're so closely related.
Sounds good. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, member of council. In 2024, the town was awarded a grant from Arizona Department of Housing to complete an affordable housing plan. This grant specifically requires recipients to conduct a housing needs assessment to help inform the housing plan. The town has been resourceful to provide cost savings in utilizing the results from this housing need assessment to inform both our Arizona Department of Housing Grant that's funded for the housing plan and our CDBG grant requirements that you just heard about. In addition, the town was able to partner with the City of Prescott, with a contract with Elliot D. Pollak and Company to complete this assessment. So with that, let me introduce you to Rick Merritt from Elliot D. Pollak and Company to present the findings.
And just so we're all following along, we're on item 2B right now.
Sorry. I jumped the gun.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be here today. Just to give you a little bit of background of our, our team, we are an economic and real estate consulting firm. We've been around for 30-some years now. We also have on our team Sheila Harris, who is a former director of the Arizona Department of Housing. She's very involved and knowledgeable about affordable housing, works with affordable housing developers today, as she's in private practice now. So we think we have a very good team. We've done work in Sedona a few years ago on a housing study, so we know the area fairly well. And as Tracy mentioned, this is a joint contract we have with Prescott and Prescott Valley, so I'll talk a little bit what we're finding in Prescott as well as I go through this. So our process is, we're doing a housing assessment. We're not doing a strategy. We're not making recommendations on how to correct the situation. We're looking at what is the status of the housing market today in Prescott Valley. So we'll look at barriers to affordable housing. We've done a lot of community outreach, and, and we will come up with a housing market demand and gap analysis. So there are many factors that, that impact housing analysis. They include demographics, economic conditions, and housing policies. The demographics depends on your, your population growth, the age distribution. I'll talk a lot about that among, among your community. Economic factors, how employment is going here, and policy decisions, what the real policy decisions will be from your, your council yourselves and the community on how to attack this particular problem. So what is affordable housing? It comes by a lot of different names, attainable workforce, missing middle, things like that. But it really comes down to, you want to make sure that, that your population is not paying more than 30% of their income towards housing, and that's the standard that HUD uses and, and is really used across the country. So the workforce, the missing middle, it really describes those households that make too much money to, to get assistance from federal state authorities. But they don't make enough to really make a dent in the housing market here. So that's really a large part of what we're looking at, is the critical service personnel, police, fire, teachers, construction workers, just people that work in retail, retail centers. Those are the ones that really keep the economy going. So just taking a look at quickly demographics, and the one thing that really pops out is your median age, about 47 years. It's quite a bit higher than the Arizona median age of 39. Your average household size is pretty typical for most of the communities we take a look at. Educational attainment, we'd like to see a large percentage of the population with bachelor's degrees and higher. Here, you're lagging a bit, and that has an impact on your, your household incomes that you see here, the types of jobs that are generated, things of that nature. The real, one of the real important things we'll look at is labor force participation. And we look at housing as an economic issue. You're, you're pretty well below the average for labor force participation, and that has to do with the age of your population. We look at Prescott. Prescott has a median age of 60. They have a labor force participation rate in the low 40% range. So what does that mean? They don't have enough people to service their population, so they have to import people, and they import people from Prescott, Chino Valley, to work in the community. You don't want to get to that kind of situation. We can see in Sedona is a community where the community fabric is really falling apart. Closing elementary schools, they don't have enough kids to get into Little League baseball teams, things of that nature. So, and somebody made the comment the other day, the billionaires are now kicking out the millionaires there. So you really want to, want to consider how you provide for your population, how you provide for the services that everybody's going to need, from hairdressers to people working in grocery stores, things of that nature. You are, your, your civilian labor force is growing, so it's keeping up with your population, but we need to make sure that the service population is there. Taking a look at the economy, location quotient's a very simple calculation. It just compares the percentage of your workforce in each of these industries to the state. So where you see a location quotient that's above 1, that means to be that, those mean, that means those are your strengths in your economy. If it's below 1, it means it's, it's a little bit of a weakness. So in consumer goods manufacturing, you're very high. In media publishing and entertainment, you're very high. I'm not exactly sure why, other than from what I know, there's a newspaper here that has a lot of employees at the current time. At least that's what shows up on, on some of the data. You're also high in retail, which is, is, can be expected, because you are a retail center here. We looked at the major employers. There's one that sticks out there that, that is incorrect, Cliff Castle Casino. I don't know why they end up on your, your list, because they're way over in Camp Verde, but that's something we need to take more of a look at. But the medical center, the school districts, the town are the biggest, and, and then you get into windows and doors, construction industry, things like that. Your unemployment rate, well, you're doing great as of the end of the year, probably still doing well. You're under 3%, so it's historically low in employment. Here's why I was talking about the worker commuting flow, where there's more people leaving Prescott every day to work than are coming in. There's about 4,200 people that stay, work, and live in Prescott Valley, but there's a lot of people leaving to work in other parts, so you have by county and a large part in Prescott. Here's, this shows where residents of Prescott Valley are working. I don't know that I believe, this comes from the census, and it shows a lot of people that are residents of Prescott Valley are working down in the valley, in Chandler, Scottsdale, Phoenix. So I don't know how well the modeling is doing there, but obviously, a lot of people work in, residents of Prescott Valley work in, in Prescott. And then where employees working in Prescott, where do they, where do they come from? They come from Prescott, Prescott, Chino Valley, some from Phoenix, some from Paulding, you can go down the list. There may be, we, we did pick up in the surveys we've done, that there are a fair amount of people that work from home, and that may end up being why these numbers are showing a lot of people working in the valley. Talking about housing, this is just a list of your, your units in the structure. We pointed out that you have a lot of duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. You can see that's 8% of your housing inventory, and you can compare that to the county or to the state, and you're almost double what you'd find across the state. The apartment market is what we consider units from 5 to 50 or more, and you can see there, the traditional apartment inventory represents only about 5% of your inventory compared to 16% in Arizona. The Arizona numbers are somewhat affected by the, the urban areas where there's certainly more apartments, but you can see that, that overall, there isn't a huge apartment inventory compared to others. We looked at data from the, the county assessor, and, uh, single-family home prices have increased by 55% in the last five years. You can see in 2019, you're at $316,000 for a single-family home. You're now at $490,000. So just a huge, unbelievable jump. Same thing happened with, with condo and townhome developments. Well, not quite as much, and they're certainly lower in price. This shows that, that sales have started to drop off dramatically, probably because of mortgage interest rates, so, and we're going to probably be seeing that continue in the next year or so. And just once again, the home price appreciation really jumped in, in 2021, continued into 2022, and now it's leveled off. So we've leveled off some, to some extent. This is new and resale prices, and you can see there's a little bit of a difference, but the market has dragged up the, the resale market as well as new homes of But the market has dragged up the, the resale market as well as new homes have also been built. We looked at, at market rate apartments. These are the major ones. There's been some development over the last couple of years. Your vacancy rate is, as we have it, as of a couple of months ago, was about twenty percent. And that's really because the newest apartment complexes are still leasing up. But rents have jumped and are on average eighteen hundred dollars a month. And that takes a lot of income to qualify for those types of units. This is the inventory, mostly one, two bedrooms, so it's not really situated for any kind of large families. The most you could get in a two bedroom unit is two, is two children along with a couple. This is the rents by bedroom size and just trending out what we see happening since two thousand fifteen. So we see things probably still continuing. And the income is required today to get into those units varies from sixty three thousand for a studio up to ninety two thousand for a three bedroom. So some pretty steep income requirements there. We also received information from your Development Services Department on, on multifamily complexes that are currently under construction, almost eight hundred units still, still under construction at this point or, or being close to being completed. And then there's fourteen hundred that had been approved, but that includes a, like shore development that's in referendum. Another eight hundred and eighty that are planned or proposed somewhere in the process at this point. So you're potentially under construction, your, your inventory is going to increase by fifty six percent. Plan and improved, approved communities, about twenty three hundred more units. So a lot of activity out there that's going to, I'm sure you know, hitting you at this point. We looked at subsidized rental complexes. These are low income housing tax credit projects that have been, had been developed in the community. Most of them are probably not committed to low income anymore. It's usually a ten to fifteen year commitment. Most of those are older than that. Although we think from what we can see, most of the rents have, have been kept below market at this point. But certainly a lot of these, which at one time were very helpful for the community, but they could go market rate at this point. We also looked at duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes and looked at the, the sample rents we could find off the MLS. And the typical median rents about sixteen hundred dollars per month. So those have been dragged up in, in, in monthly rent as well, along with the rest of the market. So want to take a look at housing affordability. Here's how households are, are shown by income. You have a median income of about seventy thousand, eight hundred dollars. Homeowner median is above that. The renter median is well below that at sixty thousand. You can see how it compares with Yavapai County and with Arizona. And the renter median's higher than the average for the county or the, the state. So a little bit better here, but still not at the levels where the people can afford the, the market. And here's just a calculation, assuming a ten percent down payment, seven percent mortgage rate, which has been varying quite a bit lately. It's a little bit below that now. But what does the median income household, what can they afford? It's about a two hundred and forty six thousand dollar house. And if you look at the payment for an FHA loan, which requires a lower down payment, it's about the same, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So really nothing that anybody making the median wage can afford in terms of, of a, a housing unit at this point in the purchase. We also looked at affordability by occupation. And you can see the, the typical Yavapai median wages, this is from twenty twenty three to twenty four, data's not out yet. But you can see that except for the bottom two, police and registered nurses, most of the people, elementary teachers, firefighters, construction labors, they really cannot afford the median rent that we're seeing in the market today. So very difficult situation. And it's, it's not just, we're seeing in, in Prescott Valley, we're seeing it really across the state. Here's the, the, the most important thing is, once again, how many people are, households are spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing? For renters, it's about forty, almost forty two percent. And for, and people spending more than fifty percent of their income on housing, it's, it's nineteen percent. And you can see how it compares to the state and the county. You're pretty well equal with, with what is going on across the state. And the same thing for owners, homeowners with a mortgage, about thirty two percent spend about, spend more than thirty percent of their income on, on housing now. Owners have more options than renters. They can sell their homes, they can move, they can, in some cases, they may have built up their, their percentage of their, their income devoted to housing because they went out and got a HELOC or something, or added to the debt on the property, things of that nature. But they have more options than renters do at this point. So the population forecast, these are from the Arizona Office of Economic Opportunity at the state. By twenty thirty, you should expect about fifty seven hundred more residents. And by twenty forty, a total of twelve thousand, two hundred or so. So still a lot of demand, a lot of people willing and wanting to move to the area. And what that translates into is a, a housing unit demand through twenty forty of about fifty one hundred units. So a lot of demand out there. The question is, what type of housing is it going to be and is it going to meet the needs of the community? You've had a very active housing market, certainly in the single family market, going back at least ten years. There's also a lot of duplexes that are being built. A lot of those are in, still in master plan communities, which is a, a, a good alternative for affordable housing. And then you can see the, the apartment units on the far right side of that, we're getting more and more apartment complexes. So what, what you're really facing today is a demand for low and moderate income households, housing demand for workforce households. This is a very well-known graphic that was put together by an architecture firm that shows how you address the missing middle housing. And it, it's a single family on, on the left side, mid-rise, high-rise on the west, on the, on the east, excuse me, on the, on the right side. That's really more urbanized, something you see in Phoenix or Tucson. But what's in the middle is really the question. What kind of housing is going to be suitable for Prescott Valley? From duplexes to courtyard homes to townhomes, things of that nature. And once again, that is the question that, that you'll be facing as we, as you go further into the study. Once again, we are not recommending any kind of strategies. We're just doing the assessment. It'll be passed on to another consultant to deal with that issue. I wanted to just go through the public participation that we are involved in. February twenty fourth, we had a public meeting which included a mentee poll. That's an online poll that people can, can vote on issues during the meeting. I'll go through a little bit of that. We had two focus group meetings on March eleventh, March twenty fourth. We did an online survey. We had seven hundred and ninety, almost eight hundred responses, which is the biggest response we've ever gotten on a survey. So really, really good outreach by the community and a lot of responsiveness back. Here's the, the mentee poll, what this looked like. And on the right, you can see the question, the current cost of housing, is that a problem? And it, it works off a QR code. If you have a phone, you can put your QR code up on the screen, and you can vote on these issues. A really helpful community feedback. So in that meeting, we found that almost ninety percent of the respondents believe the cost of a housing is very concerning. They believe that the current housing market serves retirees, empty nesters, and seasonal residents. And they believe, most of them believe that low income households and essential workers are underserved. We also, in March eleventh, the, the survey that we did was open until the end of March. Midway, we did a, pulled the data for almost five hundred respondents at that time. We will have final results here in the next few weeks or so. But seventy percent of the renters that were on the, on the, that responded to the survey pay more than thirty percent of their income to housing, and about nineteen percent owners. Some renters do plan to purchase a home in the next two years, but there's many barriers that they feel there are, they're up against. Sixty nine percent are satisfied with their housing situation. Most of that is in the homeowner's side, the renter's side, they're not as satisfied. And housing is ranked as the most important community need, followed by infrastructure improvements. The next steps we'll go into is to, to further talk about barriers to affordable housing. Is it land costs? Is it zoning? Is it things of that nature that are barriers? We'll assess the housing gap and give you some final numbers on that. And we'll develop some educational materials that'll be very helpful in promoting your, your affordable housing case. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilman, are you, you ready for this gentleman?
I think most of my questions I want to direct at Ms. Robinson, though. I've got some questions, comments, and solutions. I was a little surprised with, after all this drill we went through and the expense, that we don't have many solutions tonight. I think the problem for taxpayers in the room here is that the town has been working on housing problems for years and hasn't solved the problem yet. It's a matter of fact that money and land make you the king of the road when you want to solve the housing problem. Our town government has many millions of dollars in seven different bank accounts, and we own two thousand acres of land. I hope that based on today's, I would have hoped that based on today's presentations, we got solutions, not more years of talk. We had a housing committee that failed. And the problem for this team that we rounded up tonight is that HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department in Washington, is running out of gravy. Doge has a chainsaw. In addition, I think we heard that the town has to report back to HUD at certain points in time. But will we have HUD staff for us to report to, or are they being let go? We heard a moment ago that eighty nine percent of us think housing cost is a concern, but we don't hear ideas on how to fix it. When are we going to get ideas on how to fix it, Ms. Robinson?
Mayor, members of council, thank you for the question. I think today's presentation is to give us the foundation that we need in order for us to be able to make data-driven decisions regarding what those actual solutions will be. So today, of course, we've heard one regarding our Community Development Block Grant Program and the process that HUD requires us to undertake before we can actually go through the process of completing a consolidated plan and an annual action plan. We cannot complete those documents and successfully submit those, in, those instruments to HUD until we have the data that is needed for each of those particular components. And so we are working very closely with TDA Consulting, as well as working very closely with Pollak, so that we can have the needs assessment completed, so that we can complete the required community engagement process, so that we can hear from all members of the community and all stakeholders. So that once we submit those solutions and ideas to this body and to council, at least you will be able to make those decisions based on the data that is currently available.
Did I read, though, that you have to have a plan sent back to HUD by about May sixteenth, or did I misread that?
Mayor, members of council, the first deadline to submit that plan is May sixteenth. However, the caveat to that is that, as was mentioned by TDA Consulting, is that we first actually have to have those actual allocations. And as of right now, those allocations have not been uploaded, nor have they been provided to us by HUD, and nor has the information been uploaded into ITIS for the needs assessment. So we are checking on that information on a daily basis. We are working very closely with the, with our HUD representative here. So as soon as that information is ready, then we will be able to move forward. In the meantime, what we are trying to do is to make sure we have no time wasted. And part of that was to present to you today what that overall process is. The drop dead date by statutory regulations is August the sixteenth, if I am saying that correctly. So August the sixteenth is our statutory deadline per the Department of Housing for us to be able to submit that information. So in the meantime, what this team is doing is making sure that we have everything laid out. So the minute we have the allocation, as well as having the other information, we can then submit to this body. Here are the ideas we have based on the data that is provided. And then we will let council make a decision as to what that allocation will look like or what those activities will look like within, one, the five-year consolidated plan, and, two, the annual action plan. Those decisions will not be made solely by staff. Those decisions will, a recommendation, of course, will be presented to this body. And then council, of course, can make the, that ultimate decision.
Okay, I'm all about questions and comments and solutions. So let me ask you this. What did the community tell you regarding how to fix the housing affordability problem when you met with citizens?
Mayor, members of council, we had a litany of responses. There's no way, I guess, for me to summarize over, I think the ultimate number was eight hundred and forty five responses ultimately that we had in that survey. We had a lot of different suggestions in terms of concerns regarding housing. The solutions will come based on the data, again, that is going to be provided. There are numerous opportunities for us to be able to address that. But we will be working with the consultants, with council members, and other members of our team to figure out how we can go about combating that.
If, if I could jump in and I just want to highlight that Councilmember Williams has taken a big interest in affordable housing and has really spent a lot of time visiting with a number of different individuals. And I'd love to, and certainly he can speak for himself, but I know that if we could maybe connect him with the team to kind of share some of the findings that he's gathered, because there's been some really good conversations, I'm sure you could kind of add on to that. But there's some really good stuff that I think that we should add into the mix before we have a final, final report.
Absolutely. We will, of course, be working with all members of council. An invitation was extended to all council members to meet with each of the consultants to be able to share your ideas and suggestions. And we can, we will continue to extend that invitation to all members of council so that we can make sure that as we prepare these documents, that it does take into consideration the things that this body would like to see added into those documents.
Okay, one problem I, I think we can assume if we look at a Phoenix News report two days ago is now the numbers are as follows. Arizona home buyers need to earn a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars annually to afford a home. That's all of Arizona. I realize it's all of Arizona. Let me ask this. What is a housing gap? Because in the presentation and the packet, it says you will be asking the consultants to determine the housing gap.
I'm going to ask Rick to stand up and talk to you a little bit about what that is.
Excuse me, Mr. Williams. The housing gap is basically the number of people that are spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And trying to close that gap so it's not quite so large as it is.
Are you looking at any plans in towns that have closed the gap?
We, well, we're, once again, we're not doing the strategy under it. But there are, there's always going to be a gap. There's always going to be a portion of the population that is, has difficulty affording housing. But you have to make incremental changes, make incremental progress towards trying to, to affect that situation. But there, like I said, this is a situation that is across the state. But there, like I said, this is a situation that is across the state. There are states or cities that have taken some very significant positions to address affordable housing. You can go right up the mountain to Flagstaff, and they have adopted various methods for addressing affordable housing. There are limitations as to what the state law allows, but some cities like Flagstaff, Sedona's trying to do the same thing. They've addressed how to address some of these issues.
I think you said in the presentation, the phrase, assist communities in addressing housing, infrastructure, community development needs, especially for low and moderate income populations. So I have kind of a two-part question. First, how do you address it? Or are we just going to keep gathering data and not be able to address the problem tonight?
Well, once again, we're not suggesting recommendations, but there are basically two ways of addressing it. One is low-income housing tax credit projects. That's been the most successful project or program that HUD has had probably in decades to generate affordable housing for people making less than 60% of the area median income. The people that get stuck in the middle are the ones that maybe the city can address. By, once again, you say there's a lot of land the city owns. The city can assist perhaps with its land inventories, things of that nature. So there's really two issues you want to address, and the city really has more difficulty addressing the very low income and the low-income housing tax credit end of it.
The part two is, why does the presentation say especially for low and moderate income populations?
Well, that, those are the populations that have the most housing difficulties.
Well, people in this room have already told me they don't want free handouts, social engineering, Section 8, or special HUD arrangements. But if all we're doing is addressing low and moderate income, then what or who are missing from the equation?
Well, once again, it's a two-part issue. One is the very low income, the low and moderate, and then there's the workforce. And once again, I, the city can try to attract low-income housing tax credit developers to the areas. There are many around that would like to be here, probably. So you can address that end of it. The other end of it is the workforce housing, the people that can't get into the low-income housing mix.
Well, we may be missing something. The millennials are chafing at the bit, and they have wealth, according to another news article that broke this week. But with these grants, it looks like the town becomes beholden to the federal and state governments. I think it's somewhere on the order of $700,000. Don't get me wrong, I know Mr. Judy. He's a genius at bringing in grant money. So if you submit a HUD plan due on May 16th, are there not going to be any action items in the plan? Maybe that's best for Ms. Robinson to answer.
Yeah, there's two different, we're talking about the consolidated plan, and then we're talking about the housing assessment that we're doing, which will have a strategy built out of that by another consultant. But I don't know if you want to address that.
Mayor, members of council, so regarding the strategies, as Rick mentioned just a moment ago, there are two different pieces that we're trying to accomplish almost simultaneously. So one portion of that, yes, is to create a housing plan as required by the Arizona Department of Housing. That's an overall plan on how are we going to address housing needs overall. The second component of that is the actual consolidated plan and annual action plan, which is required by HUD. As Jennifer mentioned a little bit earlier, those plans are a lot broader. It can cover everything from youth employment programs to facade improvement, housing, CIP projects. There are numerous things that the Community Development Block Grant Program can fund and can assist us with in reference to addressing needs throughout the entire town. Those are two separate elements. Within the Community Development Block Grant Program, that gives us the opportunity in the annual action plan to pick very specific activities that will address the things that this council finds to be the most important. So we will be, we're actually using the needs assessment that Rick and his team is doing for both of those plans, rather than us pay those funds out twice. So we're trying to save the town money by actually consolidating both of those processes so that we can use that information for all of these plans that we have kind of right now in the hopper.
But as we get to the strategy component to this, if we keep relying on federal and state grants, they come with all kinds of strings attached, and we're not autonomous. Nor later, we got to let go of the gravy train. I like the fact that you said in the state, regarding the state grant money, we get, we have to ensure that individuals and families can secure housing without spending more than 30% of their income. But we saw the numbers, that's, that's pretty far off, don't you think? That's probably one of the biggest nuts to crack. The percent of income that we're spending just for housing, not groceries.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Williams, would you repeat what the question is so I can make sure I'm answering your question?
Sure. The presentation spoke of ensuring that individual, this is regarding the state grant money, ensure that individuals and families can secure housing without spending more than 30% of their income. But look at the numbers that were, you know, put up on the screen by two presenters. It looks like the toughest nut to crack in this whole equation, isn't it?
Mayor, members of council, that is a, I guess, an issue that throughout the country, that everyone is trying to ascertain how to address. So whether you make a million dollars a year, or whether you make a hundred dollars a year, the, kind of the litmus test is whether or not you're spending more than 30% of whatever your income may happen to be on housing. Is that difficult? Absolutely. So it's more difficult depending upon what your income is. And that is why, as was mentioned just a moment ago, finding that missing middle of housing, finding an opportunity so that there are housing choices for all incomes is what I think every community is struggling with.
Well, I guess, most of the remainder of my question is about strategy, so I'm a little disappointed. But when you did the needs assessment of locals, what was, what did they tell you about that? Even if you have to search for a larger group category of answers?
I'm going to ask Rick to come up and talk a little bit about what may have come out in the surveys, and what residents are saying their needs may happen to be.
Well, the survey is, you know, opinions on how people view the market. And what we found was that it's the highest, affordable housing is the highest-ranked need of the community, followed by infrastructure needs, streets, waters, those types of things. So the community recognizes that housing has become much more, much less affordable, both from the standpoint of purchasing homes as well as renting homes. You have new construction coming in, new apartments coming in. They're financed with higher levels of debt, more expensive debt. Construction costs have gone up. You're getting to the point where there's more demand and competition for land. That has driven prices up. So, you know, it's been a difficult situation where even though you're building new housing, it's not the housing that people can afford. And so that's where you really need to target. How are you going to, how are you going to change that situation? But it's very apparent to the people that responded to our survey is that that is a major issue that they feel needs to be addressed in some way or other.
Yeah, I get that. And about a week, I will have talked to my 10th expert in the development world, in the business of development. And they're very candid about what really needs to happen. And I don't mean we need to feel sorry for these guys who often become millionaires, but they're thinking so far ahead, especially with the tariff situation. They are deciding now if they're going to buy Canadian lumber, or if they're going to wait a little while and buy American lumber. That's how sophisticated their process is. They're looking at where they have to buy steel, glass, concrete. So I'm not saying we have to feel sorry for them, but you were right when you talked about costs. There was another thing that showed up in the presentation. Materials say the phrase for Prescott Valley, but then I thought I saw a phrase where you circled back to a regional approach. And I think it's pretty obvious, and I, I'm sorry, I'm borderline on a strategy, maybe Ms. Robinson can weigh in on this. Don't you think that with all the examples that I have of regional nonprofit foundations that have implemented successful housing ideas, that we better be regional? Can I ask Ms. Robinson that? Shouldn't we be thinking not Prescott Valley alone, but we may have to go Chino, Prescott, Prescott Valley? Mayor, we may even have to circle back to Paulding. Don't we need a regional approach?
Mayor, members of council, we are certainly not leaving any stone unturned regarding opportunities for us to be able to address the issues that we have at hand. I think a lot of that can be seen in our overall community engagement process, of which we looked at making sure that many individuals were included in those discussions, and whether that was looking at the Yavapai County, looking at different employers that were a part of that process, looking at different developers. Even if you look at our overall housing plan, I think we set a precedent in even us working with the City of Prescott to do our overall housing plan and looking at this from a larger perspective and a different approach. We have certainly had conversations with Sedona, with Flagstaff, and others that we have, have the same or similar issues with. And so certainly, when we get to the process of actually putting action items in place, we will certainly be looking at the information that has been provided in each of those stakeholder groups, as well as what those best practice methods may happen to be, not only here within the Quad City area, but looking at what is a best practice method statewide.
Thanks. And I believe Rick may have presented to Prescott City Council earlier in the week, because we're in this grant program together. We're sharing the grant money, I think. And so it was interesting to see the very detailed Courier newspaper article based on the Prescott presentation. But, and again, I'm going to try to stay away from strategies, and I do hope to meet with you, Ms. Robinson, and maybe in Mr. Davidson's office, and maybe bring in one other department head, because I want to be able to work with you. And I just want to say something. People might have thought that I gave Joe Contadina a hard time a few weeks ago when I was asking pointed questions about Granville 17. So I'm just going to mention one strategy thing, and then I'll back away, because we're not talking about strategies today. I own a 1,300-square-foot home because I couldn't afford a larger one, and I got a great deal on interest rates and a great price way back when. Mr. Contadino is brilliant enough to be planning many 1,300-square-foot homes, three bedrooms, two baths, with a modest yard, that may be the very first inkling of an outside-the-box thinking developer, because if we're lucky, they might sell it about $350,000, unheard of in this town. So what's going to happen is the HUD grant and process isn't going to solve the problem. It's going to be market forces and a really strong nonprofit foundation that can bring all these parties together and use town land, town cash, a new mind shift in developer thinking, and a new mind shift for customers, because they have to come with skin in the game. The ones that are succeeding in the regional towns that I'm looking at mandate that the customers come with cash and a 10-year commitment, or they don't leave with equity in the home. So all three components have to have skin in the game. And what I was saying about millennials, they've all of a sudden amassed more money than that age group has ever amassed. So we need to really be concentrating on them. We know they don't have enough jobs in this town. That's for our Economic Development Director to tackle, not a housing committee. However, we have to be aware of that, because their chief problem is a gigantic down payment of $20,000 to $24,000, even though they're employed and they've got cash. So I'll back off from the strategies and just tell you that I think we agree on a lot, and I think we should meet and keep talking about it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Friend.
You know, I think, I think it's great to study these problems and to try to get a grasp of what we are facing. It seems, though, that one key, one or two key factors that are controlling this whole market, we're dancing around, it's the 700-pound gorilla in the room. And that is a fact, that we are facing a mass migration from California. And the recent wildfires have increased that migration. In fact, I've already met people that are already moving here because of those fires. And their houses, on average, are, let's say roughly a million dollars, for round numbers. And so when they get, when they cash out and they come here, all of our housing is affordable to them. So that no matter what we do, no matter how we, how we dance around and try to make, lower the price, it actually, they're going to get snapped up by people from out of town, from out of state, and coming up from the Phoenix area, because it's too hot down there. There's a lot of reasons. But we're fighting, we're shoveling out a tide here. There's a, there's a massive trend of people wanting to move here for various reasons, and they consider this affordable housing. So we're fighting, we're, you're pitting, we're basically, the heavyweight fighters are, with the big, expensive houses that they're selling, are fighting against the welterweight class. And so it's almost, I don't see how we can do it. If, you know, we could take all of our money and subsidize all this housing, but it's not, in the end, I don't see how it's going to play out in our favor. So do you, could you give me some insight, your thoughts on that?
Mayor, members of council, I think, to go back to an earlier conversation, just in terms of strategy, and although we're not there yet, but just to give some insight, this is not, our government cannot resolve housing issues by itself. Any community issue cannot be resolved by government alone. We have to partner with others. We have to figure out who those partners are and figure out where we have a shared mission, vision, and goal. And so I think we have quite a few partnering agencies, some of which participated in the community engagement process that we just undertook. So we are working, of course, with Habitat for Humanity. We're working with other organizations that have this shared interest in being able to resolve some of these concerns. Is it going to be one particular thing that resolves the housing issues within this community or any community nationwide? My answer to that would generally be no. It's going to have to be a multifaceted approach to figure out how those things get resolved. Mentioning, for instance, economic development, bringing new businesses in, dealing with educational issues and the type of education that children have. There's just so many different facets and things, from transportation on, that goes into housing. And we just have to be honest about what those things are, which is why the needs assessment that was just recently conducted is so important, because it gives us at least a baseline of understanding kind of where we are. It's then up to us as a community to decide, of the 8 million things that may be out there for us to take advantage of, which ones are the appropriate ones that this body and that this community would like to undertake. And so we hope to come back to you, now that we now have this baseline. We hope to come back to you with strategies and suggestions and partners that are willing to work with us to be able to resolve this, or at least to start to chip away at it. How do you eat the elephant, one bite at a time? So we hope to eventually be able to do that. But the baseline for us today is just to at least be able to agree to what the facts and the data actually state. and the data actually state.
So just to follow on, and maybe carry these thoughts with you, is how are we going to deal with high interest rates that are fixed and that are basically nationwide? How are we going to deal with the high inflation rate that we're having with building materials? How are we going to deal with potential tariffs? Like, for instance, a lot of the stuff that's coming from Canada, building our forest products that are used in housing. I could tell you that my way of making an affordable house, my first house purchase, I worked one full-time job and two part-time jobs. I worked nights and I worked weekends, and I drove a tow truck even overnight. I was on state. I did three jobs, and I took in a roommate. And that was how, and nobody sponsored me, nobody, after I got done paying off my college debts, I immediately started buying a house. And I don't know that everybody wants to subsidize, that they, a lot of people here have done the same thing, and do they really want to subsidize other people so they don't have to do any of that stuff? Wet equity. I also bought a house that was a fixer-upper in a bad neighborhood, and I did everything, you know, and I built it up and then resold it. So those are things that, alternative ways of dealing with this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman. Jill.
Hi, thank you so much for this presentation. And, you know, I speak briefly with you, Stephanie, about, I know that this is the very beginning of the process, and I appreciate that you even included constructioned and planned complexes. When I was going through the list, I just noticed some missing information. There's been some other new construction, and I wanted to make sure that everything gets included, like Crown Point Apartments, Ativo Senior Center, even Mulberry Farms. Desert Pines does leases for RVs. And so I just want to make sure that we have a complete picture, get all that data in there, so that we're getting a really complete picture. And so I would like to, you know, participate as well.
Yes, mayor, members of council, at any time, and please review the information that was provided in the council report. At any time, if there's any additional information that you think we need to add, we will certainly do that, and we will contact you regarding that. We will also circle back around with our Development Services Department to make sure that the information that we have from them is the most up-to-date information before the final report is submitted.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item 2C, potentials of City Detect software.
And while we're pulling that presentation up, let me at least give a little bit more information regarding the next presentation that we'll have, and then introduce that speaker. Just for context, as you are aware, we had the wonderful opportunity of getting this wonderful $200,000 grant from the Arizona Department of Housing. But last year, we also had a conversation with you regarding what those housing goals are. And part of that came out of our 2024 strategic plan. And one of those goals, of course, is to increase the amount of attainable housing by 5% by 2026. And in doing so, we looked at one of those goals, and one of those goals was to look at and to try to preserve our existing housing stock. And so as we created the application for the housing plan for the Arizona Department of Housing, we included in that as a component to do a housing audit. We wanted to see what our current housing stock looked like. One part of that also is to figure out if we do a CDBG program, and we have done this before at the town where we had minor and major home repair, we wanted to look and see how many of those homes would even be eligible for that process. If we have a senior, for instance, that needed some additional work to their home, needed a handicap ramp or something of that nature, had a roof that needed some repairs to it, how many homes would even be included in that particular process? And so we included as a component of that housing plan for us to do a housing audit. The hard part was finding someone to do it, especially since we have about three code officers, and we knew it would take months for them to drive to every single residential house and to do that type of assessment. And so we looked high and low, and we were able to actually find a organization or a company that could actually do that for us. The wonderful thing about that company is that they were using some brand-new AI software for them to be able to do that audit, do that in a very short amount of time, I think it was actually the course of over a weekend, Gavin, you can come on up, over the course of maybe a weekend, but we were able to look at our entire housing stock to get a very good idea of what that looked like. The wonderful thing about, once we get that information back, and of course, it is going to be included in that needs assessment, the other good thing about that is that we said, you know, what would be the opportunity to use this innovative technology in other means and other ways? And how could we use that to assist our code enforcement team? And so we wanted to bring to council this evening the opportunity to take a look at that software, see just how great that software is in terms of looking at what our housing situation is and what our property maintenance situation may happen to be here in Prescott Valley, and to be able to use that software to assist our code team in doing re-inspections and even initial inspections. And so I'm going to invite Gavin to come up and have a conversation with you regarding City Detect and its software and what its capabilities are. Gavin?
Welcome, sir. Thank you, Stephanie. Sorry, my voice is going out. Sat next to some talkers on the plane. But mayor, members of council, it's great to meet all of you today, so thank you for your time. I'm Gavin Von Blake, the CEO and co-founder of City Detect. We are an AI company, and our principal focus, yes, I can, is this?
It's this one?
I can hear myself better now. Yeah, we'll assume you've heard all of that, at least so far. So we started this company in 2021, myself and my co-founder, Dr. Eric Johnson, who is an urban economist, he understands the built environment very well. And so what we did was we actually started using computer vision, which is a form of AI, I'm sure all of you guys have heard of or have some exposure to AI, you know, it's everywhere now, it's even vending machines, I think. But basically, there's a difference between what we're all hearing about when we're talking about large language models like ChatGPT or things like that. What we do is a form of predictive AI. So what is represented in a picture? Even if it's never seen that specific housing or wall component, it's able to identify what's going on in that image. And so generally, how it works is we break things down. Every house that one of our cameras sees, you're able to identify whether there's a roof present, or a column, or a door, stairs, or a lawn, right? So all of these different, what we call objects, and then there's different attributes associated with each of them. So a roofing structure might be structurally unsound, or there might be a tarp that's on the roof, or a lawn may be overgrown, or there might be an abandoned vehicle that's on that lawn. And we're able to put those cameras onto different forms of fleet vehicles, whether those are trash trucks, or street sweepers, or code enforcement vehicles. And so as these are going around to different communities, and they're actually observing what's there, it's able to get an objective and fair and equitable snapshot and analysis of that property. So you're able to see what's going on with a property regardless of the socioeconomic area. It doesn't matter whether it's a $2 million house or whether it's a $30,000 house, so long as there's not signs of decay, there's not going to be any flags associated with that property. So briefly, I'll just kind of show you in 30 seconds the way that this kind of looks while it's actually happening. And if it doesn't work, we'll just pretend that it does. So effectively, as these cameras are going through and they're driving by and it's passing a property, it's actually doing full-on property analysis for each one. So if there's vacant or abandoned lots, if there are signs of abandonment, like boarded-up windows or doors, or if there's vegetation and overgrowth, all things that, you know, leading minds have determined are direct causes of blight, direct causes of property values declining, and other significant issues throughout communities. So that's what we started with, was housing, and additionally, we're able to identify different things that are associated with the public right of way. So those might be illegally dumped tires, or graffiti, or homeless in camp. So when we went through, and we actually did, you know, the study of Prescott Valley, you know, it's an incredibly clean city. It's beautiful, it's one of the cleanest cities that we've actually had the pleasure of working with, so I commend all of you, you know, and the fantastic team that you guys have. It's been an honor to work with Stephanie and Tracy and the rest of the team to do this, perform this study. But as you're going through, you're able to see, there's, so just to kind of level set on the colors, so green is good, there's no real issues, yellow is only minor aesthetic issues, a red property will be something that has a more significant issue. The way that we look at those kind of high priority issues are signs of abandonment, or if there is a structural or safety hazard, or if there's like a tarp on the roof, which would suggest water ingress into the house, right? Kind of the serious issues present on a house. And ultimately, when we're talking about workflow development and solutions, and how we actually go forward and make this part of an ongoing solution, we work with code enforcement partners who, they have a human in the loop, so they review the information that we've collected. We don't send out any notices or anything like that directly to constituents. Everything goes directly through our partner agencies within code enforcement or public works, and they actually rectify the problems. So we're merely a data collection company. We flag where they are, and then, you know, obviously, all of that discretion lies in the team. And here's one additional video that kind of shows, you know, the distinction between art and vandalism. So when we're talking about being able to identify various issues, we're able to distinguish between vandalism, as well as murals or art, and we flagged the vandalism. Now, when we did the study, we actually found very little graffiti. I think there was like one piece of graffiti, like, that we found in all of Prescott Valley. But we're also able to do litter, debris, illegally dumping, all sorts of different issues. And one of the, you know, we think is the significant value adds is it enables you to be proactive, but also to respond to new and emerging issues. So if you start getting constituent complaints about specific things, you're able to see, okay, what is the actual quantity in our community that exists without going and doing a brand-new study? And we're able to achieve that by having these cameras on cyclical vehicles that are patrolling and going through these areas and communities. We're very privacy conscious, and so from that perspective, all the imagery is taken from the public right of way. We also have facial blurring, as well as license plate blurring that's available, that the partners that we're working with are able to opt into. Oh. Yeah, so these are the instances of, you know, various kind of right-of-way issues that are present in the community. Those are either tires, or graffiti, or snipe signs. Snipe signs are the illegally placed signs, like we'll buy your house for cash, or we'll fix your credit, that are oftentimes placed in unapproved locations. They're pretty easy to actually go out and debate, right? So that's part of that workflow that we've developed, is once you identify an issue, you're able to actually go and respond to it relatively quickly. So just a few, like, instances of, you know, when we find an issue, there's a bounding box, which is basically just a frame that's placed around a specific issue, so it finds debris, it's able to have summarization tables that go out, or emails that are able to show the agency that we're working with precisely where these issues are, when it was taken, with proof points of it. And it's not even necessarily tied to a parcel, it just has a GPS point, so there's not a name or an identity associated with that, it's just where is this issue in space? Now, when we went through, you know, these numbers are actually phenomenal, right? So when we're talking about 20,000 parcels, and only 1,600 of them were overgrown, that's actually a significant win. But there were a few structural issues that we were able to really quickly call out. And so one of the nice things about when you have this, again, cyclical and granular data, is you're able to see how that's changing over time, and you're able to respond to it quickly before it actually gets to kind of that tipping point. Because I think, as most of us know, once a property gets kind of to that area where, you know, things have existed for a long time, it's kind of difficult to actually go in and fix it after the fact if it gets too stale. So here are some of the examples of issues from, you know, imagery that we're talking about, right? So if it's a structural issue, whether it's with a soffit, or gutter, or fascia, or if it's cracked pavement, or a fence, you know, issue, various things that are granular, you know, and they don't necessarily need to be responded to, that's, again, the discretion of the department. We did find 712 undeveloped lots. So as we're talking about, you know, potential solutions and utilizing and leveraging space, that is one of the things that would be, something we wanted to call out and bring attention to. Roadside detections, we spoke briefly about that, very, only one piece of graffiti, some snipe signs, as well as debris. But again, very clean city, this just talks a little bit about the integration potential that we have with existing technologies already in the technology stack that code enforcement uses. We've done this, we've had successful implementations in other cities that we've been very proud to work with. A contender for another one of the cleanest cities is like Greenville, Greenville, very similar to you guys, and what they use is for, is primarily looking for litter and, you know, some of those things that are really easy to respond to, because they don't have a high level of blight, right? As you guys frankly don't. And the pricing is all-inclusive, it's $112,000 per year. That covers several cameras that are, would be installed on the actual vehicles, and that is effectively providing a non-stop kind of stream, identifying where those issues are, so that you're able to have those surveys and get things flagged. And, you know, as we're talking about oversight and making sure that we're responding to grants, and, you know, part of that is data collection and a routine data collection, and making sure that we have, you know, kind of our finger on the pulse, because you're not necessarily able to have a, you know, well-defined solution if you don't have a way of actually measuring that. And of course, there's different ways, and we're just one of them. So with that, I would love to hear any questions, which I'm hopeful that there are, and I'm confident that there will be.
Councilor, any questions or comments? Councilman?
So of the, how much was it, 712 lots that were vacant, is what you said? Do you know how many of those are actually buildable? Like, maybe they're not buildable for some reasons?
I don't know, ma'am. If we're just, just the data aggregator, but we actually do have a longer report that we're generating for Stephanie, we'll work alongside her to.
Just having that question.
We can get you a map. We've been working on a map that shows where all of our lots are that are in either flood plain, floodway, and so there's quite a large number of those lots are in areas that are going to be, would be very expensive to develop.
Or on a hill, or whatever, too, yeah. Okay, and then most of those lots are still privately owned, correct? Even though it's not like that they're part of the city, that we could say, oh, we can do something with those lots? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman?
Which car are you driving by my house in? Just kidding, a little levity. I have a couple of questions that may be directed at Ms. Robinson because it's enforcement questions, if you don't mind. If we go with City Detect and our cameras show someone who encroaches on, say, a common easement with a fence that's three feet into the easement, what will you do?
Mayor, members of council, this particular software wouldn't necessarily be utilized regarding those type of issues when we're talking about property lines or things of that nature. The software that we're talking about in terms of its utilization, it would really primarily be for zoning violations and property maintenance violations.
Could you use it, though, on my favorite house down the street from me that has eight cars in the front yard for enforcement?
Mayor, members of council, the wonderful thing about this software is it at least gives us a snapshot in time in terms of what violations may be present. That doesn't necessarily completely eliminate the fact that a code enforcement officer still may need to go out to do further investigation on some of those properties, but it depends on the violation. A lot of it can be used, for instance, when we're talking about a reinspection process, code enforcement may have already gone out, and sometimes, to be quite honest, we may go to a property five, six, seven times as we continually try to work with residents to get what we call is voluntary compliance. So the software certainly would pick that up, it'll let us know if we've already cited that person, whether or not if we happen to drive by, whether or not they have already removed vehicles that that code enforcement officer may have talked to them about, to see whether or not they have been removed. And it would keep us from having to go back out to do that reinspection. That may be something that can be handled as simply as a phone call.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bye, sir.
One of the things I really like about this software is that it allows this town to be proactive, as opposed to reactive with a myriad of issues. And that's one of the things I'm really liking in what I see here. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, so, you know, we are working through the budget process. Mr. Mayor, I, so, you know, we are working through the budget process, and, you know, this next year, we're anticipating, you know, zero additional revenue growth for the towns. We're trying to be extremely cautious. So these are big numbers, so this would be an item that council's gonna want to, you know, if you want to include this, you're gonna need to direct us as part of that process. So we'll be having that conversation in the, at the, or May study session to get into kind of these details.
Thank you, sir. Great job on this, just the technology, sir. You should be commended just for, you know, put this together, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next up, item 2D, Glassford Dells Regional Park Project Discussion, Mr. Kirin.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, bringing before you today are gonna be the conceptual renderings for the Glassford Dells Regional Park. Within these renderings, I just had a few highlights that I wanted to make sure that we mentioned. Everything that is conceptualized within these renderings is community-driven, based off a steering committee, open house, and then a community survey with a little under 3,200 responses. And within the renderings, it's the community vision, making sure that we are listening to the public and the council for what everyone's looking for to go out into the regional park area. Through these renderings, you will see connectivity and recreational offerings for all ages. The connectivity aspect with our community partner to the west, City Prescott, they have trails out in that area, as well as we do with the Iron King and the summit, and making sure that this area incorporates the amenities that our residents are looking for, so they can recreate and enjoy their time out there. This project is about the open space preservation by purchasing Glassford Hill, that will protect this area for future generations to be able to enjoy, recreate on, and just be able to relax and enjoy Prescott Valley. There's interpretive and et regational opportunities, making sure that we're taking into account the kiddos being out there. We programmed in an interpretive trail specifically, as long, as well as additional interpretive signs that will be all throughout the park. And lastly, this, this is a huge project, it's gonna take a number of years for us to complete. So using a phased approach to be able to get this park implemented will be the way that we will tackle this. However, there are some possibilities for some near-future aspects that we'll be able to try and tackle in the short term. And with us today is the Planning Center, our consultant that's been putting together these renderings for us, and working with us through the process. We have Lexi, Brian, and Daniel, so I'm gonna turn it over to them, so that they can go ahead and present the renderings.
Welcome, ma'am.
Very good. Good afternoon, evening, almost. Good, Mayor, members of the council, my name is Lexi Welland, I'm a principal at the Planning Center. I'm also joined this evening by my colleagues, Daniel Bradshaw, who is a principal landscape architect, as well as Brian Underwood, who is a born and raised local Prescott teammate we have here, so brings a lot of insight to our team. But just wanted to introduce you all to our firm. The Planning Center is a private consulting firm headquartered down in Tucson, Arizona, and we specialize in land use planning and landscape architecture, with really a, creating a balanced, practical approach of how we deal with land use, how we deal with recreation, how we involve the public, and how we mesh all of those things together. So how we were, were brought into this vision was back in September of 2023, Mr. Davidson and Mr. Kirin invited us in to prepare a visioning and design charrette light, if you will, like we call it, with the steering committee. And so we held a series of workshops and visioning sessions with the steering committee to start to explore the possibilities of what could occur on this space. Where were those locations where active activities could occur, and where should those natural passive preservation areas occur? And so we, we did a series of meetings and identified two locations for active activities, and then the remainder of being appropriate for passive activities. And then what we also identified with the steering committees was a list of amenities that they felt were appropriate in response to the community needs assessment that was prepared in 2019. So as, as Bobby mentioned here, this is really a community-driven approach, where we have listened and gone through an iterative process with the steering committee that was then put out to the public by way of an open house, as well as a survey. And as Bobby mentioned, we received over, just under 3,200 responses on that survey. And what that survey was asking was, what are the amenities the community wants to see? And we, we provided a list, and in those 3,000 responses, we identified a series of about eight different amenity typologies. So the top-rated amenities, and that's what I'm gonna turn over to Brian and Daniel to describe as to what those amenities are that the community suggested they'd like to see. So thank you very much.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Lexi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Brian Underwood, and I thank you for the opportunity here to explain a little bit more about the overall master plan concept that you see up here on the screen for Glassford Dells. So two things that I, that I really wanna convey on, on this, this slide here are connectivity and context. So on the context side of things, I'll wait here for a second. On the context side of things, just wanna orient everybody with, with how we're viewing this. So as you can see, north is turned to the right in this exhibit, so Highway 89 is, is on the right-hand side, Highway 69 on, on the left-hand side, and then we have Prescott and Watson Lake, Westgate, the, the park that they're planning up there off of the Peavine Trail, and the Dells up in that area. And what you can see there outlined in black is the Glassford Dells area, the 3,600 acres. And so we're talking about quite a massive area that, that we're doing planning for. But as you can see, there's a, an area shown there, kind of hatched out in the white, and that is the City of Prescott's portion of Glassford Dells, and that's about 1,800 acres. It's, it's about an even split between Prescott and then, you know, Prescott Valley, and, and Yavapai County has about 500 acres there, just, just to the left of where that Yavapai County label is. And so when, when we're talking about this, I just wanna, you know, make sure that we're all understanding that, you know, we're looking at, at a, in an area that, when, when it's on a sheet like this, about an inch is 2,000 feet. So, so it's a, quite a, quite a big area there. And then as we focus down into some of those, those areas that are numbered on, on the exhibit, that's what we'll be going through in greater detail of, of some of the, the programming that we've done at the base of the hill, a little bit at the summit, and then on the south side over by the Home Depot, and where the Kia is, or where it used to be Castle Golf when I was a kid. But, but basically, what we have here is you have the east gate area, that kind of amorphous blob that's, that's shown there as, as number one, that has more of your formal park area in it, and it has a trailhead, disc golf, and a ropes course. And with that disc golf and everything included in there, we're looking at an area about 72 acres in size. And so number one is about 72 acres, the summit, we, we have maybe an acre or so of disturbance up, up there. And then down on the south side of things, for the South Gate Trailhead, that's about two and a half acres in there where there's some existing parking for, for the trails. And getting into some of the, the trails that you see there on the, on the map, there's kind of a mixture of, of existing and planned trails. And, and so the, most of, of what's existing is on the Prescott side, in and around the Dells, and then there's also some flatter, less rugged trails that, that are running through the, the county subdivisions on the north side, or on the right side of, of the exhibit there. And so all told, there's about 42 miles of existing trails that you're seeing in here in this area. Another 11 or 11 to 12 miles that have been planned by both Prescott and Prescott Valley, connecting to the existing trails that are there in the Dells. And then you have about another 20 to 25 miles of trails and pathways, including Jasper Parkway, that we're proposing more on the, the Glassford, Prescott Valley side, if you will. And, and I just wanna emphasize that, you know, when you look at kind of the current makeup of those trails, it's, on the Dell's side of things, very rugged, you know, black-rated trails, and then you have sort of your, your beginner trails, the green trails, that are going through the master plan communities through, through, you know, the subdivisions to the north there. And so what this is, is planning to do is sort of bridge that gap, and to create, you know, some, some more variety of trails to allow for, you know, people that, that wanna have perhaps a shorter trail experience, or even a longer one, and have an entire loop around the mountain, or, you know, a series of smaller loops that they could choose from. And so it's really about adding some variety out there, and opening the, opening the hill up to, to additional folks that perhaps aren't able to recreate there today. And then also keeping in mind that this is all very still highly conceptual, the, the trail lines that we're showing there, they may end up being, you know, rethought as folks get out into the field, and, you know, there's always adjustments there. As we start to look into environmental studies and other things, some of those trail lines may shift, some of them may go away, some of them may be, you know, dedicated to, to hiking and, and not dual-use. So just keeping in mind that this is all very conceptual. And then the last thing that I didn't mention there on the exhibit is that number four, and that's a wildlife watering hole that we've contemplated. And Daniel will get into a little bit more detail on that, but essentially, just for context, if you're looking from the blue trail on the right side of that four to the yellow trail, that's about 900 feet across there. So making sure that there's some good separation between any of that trail activity and the wildlife watering hole, you know, probably a minimum of about 400 feet at it, at its narrowest there. And that was really born out of a lot of the meetings that Mr. Kirin has been having with members of, of the public groups and, and individuals, and responding to some of those needs for, for what he's heard in, in those meetings. And with that, I'll turn it over to Daniel to walk us through more of the details of, of each of those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Mayor and council, my name is Daniel Bradshaw, and I'm a landscape architect at the Planning Center. I'm glad to be with you here today. We've got a series of slides here, there's probably about four that we'll go through, where we dive in a little bit deeper to the areas that are currently identified with that green symbol on this particular slide here right now. So this first image is what we're referring to as the East Gate. And if, if, I'll go back here, just so you can kind of see where that's at once again on the overall, but as Brian mentioned, if you look at number one there towards the bottom of the page, that represents kind of a large green blob that you see there, the amorphous shape, the, the, the right-hand portion is what we're gonna be looking at next here. So this area here represents approximately 40 acres on, on the screen here that you can see. So as you can see, Jasper Parkway is kind of, is depicted running left to right in this exhibit, this exhibit is also turned on its side, if you will, so north is facing towards the right. This particular section of the park is referred to as the East Gate, because it really serves as a trailhead, or a series of trailheads to the trails that you saw in that previous exhibit that Brian discussed. And trails were, were noted as kind of the, the number-one consensus pick for the most desired amenity for the space. So there are trailheads throughout this area that provide access for, as Brian mentioned, a variety of trail scenarios, for those that want a more experienced, or for those that are more experienced, that want perhaps a more difficult trail, or those that are less experienced and, and want a less difficult trail. So what I'm gonna do is kind of walk you through what I would consider kind of the, the entry experience to this park, and then we can talk about some of the uses that are depicted here. Obviously Jasper Parkway is under construction, there's currently a multi-use path associated or planned for that Parkway there, that's also depicted on this, the screen here, and then access underneath of the Parkway via pedestrian tunnel. So this concept would retain that access point, but probably also provide additional access at surface crossings as well over time. So what you're seeing here is an access point that looks an awful lot like a roundabout, and this is an idea or a concept that's just being explored at the moment. It doesn't necessarily represent something that would happen immediately, but this plan as a conceptual master plan is the kind of thing that would direct decisions over the course of many years. So there's an opportunity there to slow traffic down, to provide some art, some monumentation, some community branding, that then draws people into the site. As you go up towards the, towards the center of the site there, you'll see a smaller roundabout, and this roundabout separates two areas of this particular section of the park. On the right-hand side of the screen, there you'll see more of the active spaces. These are represented by the, the Gateway Ropes Course and the Gateway Pump Track. That Ropes Course represents approximately three and a half acres, and would consist of a variety of towers and rope structures, right? So you could have potentially nets, zip lines, other elements there. This is an opportunity for individuals that, and families, but also could be team-building opportunities as well. Just above the Ropes Course there is the Gateway Pump Track. This represents about an acre of land, and would provide an opportunity for, for bikers, the, the ability to, to learn the skills necessary to eventually take their bikes to the, the mountain bike trails in and around the region here. What you'll also notice is that between these two spaces is a parking lot. This parking lot, like all the parking lots depicted on screen here, is comprised of two surfaces, one that would be a hard surface, like asphalt, and the other that would be a soft surface, something that has a bit more low-impact development here, that allows rainwater to percolate. We really want this to be a park that captures rainwater where it falls, and utilizes that to the best extent possible for landscape purposes, so that as landscape is introduced to the site here, native plants, native trees, shrubs, and ground covers, as well as drought-tolerant plant material, that they can survive not only on, on irrigation through establishment period, but perhaps after establishment period on rain alone. And you may see in, there's some very small symbols depicted throughout this particular exhibit, there are little blue raindrops, those, those represent areas where we would anticipate harvesting rainwater. And that could be done with, with swales, with, with microbasins, with gabions, these are passive rainwater harvesting strategies. On the right side of that same parking lot, between the Ropes Course and the Pump Track, would be a trailhead, and this is an opportunity to access many of the trails that were portrayed in the previous exhibit. But I also wanna point to a, a particular trail at this time. This would be an interpretive path that would serve as a loop around the entirety of this space. So if you can follow the, at the edge of the parking lot between the Ropes Course and the Pump Track, you'll see a gray solid line that looks like it might be an asphalt multi-use path there, that runs along the right-hand side of the, the Ropes Course, and then down below it, and alongside Jasper Parkway. This represents the bottom half of a loop that would be accessible, so that families with strollers, or those that might have trouble getting out and onto the trails, can still walk an internal loop here, and there would be interpretive opportunities on that loop as well. That loop then takes you above the top of the page, around what's being depicted as the Gateway Park and Playground area, and then back down to where it would start at the trailhead again. Moving from that central roundabout to the left, you can see the Gateway Park and Playground here. This is an area that we represent a number of amenities and uses, primarily passive spaces. What I want to note here, and we did hear this roundly through conversations with the community, is that this, this particular concept does not depict ballfields, does not depict lighted ballfields or sports courts, or even event space for, for large events. So the, the activities here are either passive, or they're moderately active, but there's no real high-active spaces here, or competition spaces here, or event spaces here. So in that Gateway Park and Playground, you'll notice that there are several playground spaces, you could have playgrounds for, for younger kids, we call those the, the smaller totlots for, for children ages two to five, and then you'd have larger playground spaces for those between the ages of six and about 12 or so. Associated with that area would be ramadas or shade structures, so that you could have picnics and gatherings, and a small event lawn that represents, represents about 30,000 square feet, so about two-thirds of an acre, that would be a flex space. Associated with that would be a very small amphitheater, so that you could have classroom space out there, you could have other, other small gatherings in that area. On the, the, the bottom of that area there, towards the left of the, the central park, you'll notice that there is an area that's identified as a community garden, and with that space there, there's also a, a, a large pavilion that could serve as a food truck pavilion, it could serve as a, a, a craft space or artisan space for small events, but it would be boutique in, in, in terms of its ability to only accommodate a handful of vendors, or food trucks, or, or, or other, other activities in that nature. But associated with that, that pavilion there is a community garden space that could feature small orchards, could be, could feature garden boxes, vegetable gardens for the community. That whole area there represents about an acre in size, including the pavilion and the community garden itself. And then as you continue towards the left, you'll see a, another parking lot, this parking lot serves as an access point into the wag dog park, and, and a trailhead on, on, above that dog park as well. I will note that on the east side of Jasper Parkway, there's another park that's being proposed, this is Prairie Park, and it's a smaller park, a neighborhood park, that would benefit primarily the residents that live adjacent to that space, so that they could access it quite, quite easily and quite quickly. It would not be nearly as amenitized as the larger park, but could still provide an opportunity for small picnics, a small playground, and then once again, access opportunity for small picnics, a small playground, and then once again access to the multi-use path that'll run alongside Jasper Parkway. So with that, what I'm going to do is if you can envision yourself moving farther to the south, we're going to look at the gateway disc golf course. So just to, once again, orient you to this particular exhibit, you can see the dog park depicted here on the right-hand side of the exhibit. So the disc golf course here would sit just to the south of that or to the left of that on the screen here. This disc golf course represents a, a complete course, if you will. So we have 18 holes, nine of which would be, which would be, would offer an opportunity for beginners and intermediate players to play a disc golf and another nine which would be geared towards intermediate and more expert disc golfers. And the difference between the holes really comes down to the length of the hole itself and some of the way in which the holes are oriented. So there is an opportunity here to play because of some of the, the topography. And I do want to point out that we are low on Glassford Hill at this point, so we're not up in, in, in an area where we're constrained by topography, but there will be a little bit of topography here, so you can actually use that to your advantage when playing disc golf. Some holes could have you going uphill, some holes could have you going downhill, some holes could have you traveling with the terrain itself. In addition to the holes here, there will likely be some small trails that connect each of the tees and the baskets to each other so that you could walk through the space here and, and several shade structures as well so that as you're halfway through a, a morning or a, an activity with your family, you can stop at one of the ramadas and enjoy the shade. There's also an opportunity here for a, a potential secondary access point into the park. This is denoted there with that white dashed line. Now, moving on from the disc golf course, we're going to move essentially westward into the site there. I'm going to back up to this first image here, and if you see that symbol that says number four there, that represents a wildlife pond. It was just outside the, the, kind of the extent of this particular image. And here you can see the water tanks, which I think everyone's familiar with. So this would sit below the water tanks and provides an opportunity for, for, for a more permanent water, watering hole or pond solution for, for wildlife in the area there. As Brian mentioned, it is at a point where we've got approximately 400 feet between trails. So really at no point should anybody be approaching this space here. It is dedicated for wildlife, and there would be signage along trails to indicate that the area there is essentially restricted from, from, from individuals that might want to, to head towards that space to see what they could find. If we travel further west, we get towards the summit here, and this particular concept formalizes an area where I think people are currently using the space as a, as a, as a viewpoint and maybe had a picnic area. But this is an area there that allows us to have a lot of interpretive opportunities. So you could have interpretive signage up there. There's flexible space, so you could have small classes or events up in that area there as well. This concept depicts several small shade structures and, and some picnic spaces as The area that's located in the center that looks green, that wouldn't necessarily be a natural turf per se. It could be a decomposed granite surface. It could be pavers. It could be an artificial turf, really materials at this point. We haven't delved too, too much into determining what materials might be best situated for any of these particular spaces, but it's a flexible area there so that once you arrive to the summit, there's an opportunity for small group gatherings. You could have a Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts activity up at the top there as well. But it formalizes a space that's currently being used and essentially does not add a, a unique use to the space, but it simply provides the ability for those that are currently using the space to have a more comfortable experience and encourages those that haven't been to the top of, of the summit to now explore that and, and enjoy that as well. And the last slide we're going to look at here is what we're referring to as the south gate. This is the, this is the area that Brian pointed out is, is just to the, the south of the Kia, north of the Hobby Lobby here. There are currently some informal parking spaces in this area here, but there's an opportunity to formalize that here and to have a, a parking area that provides a, a number of parking spaces for users. In fact, this particular concept details what that parking area could look like and also identifies an area where you can expand that if you find that it's quite successful and you need more parking spaces. But what's depicted here is a, 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 a small set of shade structures or ramadas. Once again, it's a gathering space as people get together with friends before they begin a hike or at the end of a hike, as they're cooling down after they get back to their car, they can hang out there. It provides great views of the valley below, and there's also a, a small bathroom associated with this space and then the ability to eventually have a, a food truck or maybe potentially another vendor there if you were to have, you know, a, a, a community-wide hiking event or something along those lines. You could have shaved ice there or something, right? As a, as a, as a refreshment for that type of activity here. But the use here I think is, is, is pretty simple. It's mostly parking in this area here and, and interpretation and access to the trails that would take you up, up through the hill and then on beyond if you wanted to travel all the way around Glassford Dells. So with that, I'm going to turn to this last slide here and turn the time backward to Bobby to talk about next steps.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, as you can see, a lot of work has gone into this project over the last few months. With our next steps for this project, we have a public presentation and feedback scheduled for April 30th in the Recreation Office, so then we can showcase these current concepts to the community and ask for additional feedback from all of our residents. We're getting the advertising out there to make sure that everybody knows, and we're hoping for a good turnout. Once we get that feedback from the community, we'll go ahead and do some redesigns within the concepts, so then we can send out a final public survey to make sure that we're getting the residents of Prescott Valley exactly what they're looking for through this park. And then once we get the survey results back, we'll, we'll design, I'm sorry, based off the feedback, we will redesign our concepts one more time to be able to bring those final renderings back to council for your approval to be able to move on with the process. So with that and the next steps and the renderings all being presented, any questions or feedback at this time?
Councilman Frey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I'm very happy to see this. I got a lot of feedback months ago about people wanting passive only, and, and, and all the people that are responsible for this have delivered and delivered something that I think we can be proud of. It's never going to be please everyone, but I think it's going to please the majority of people, and it's going to be family-friendly, pet-friendly. It, it, it checks off a lot of boxes. It's environmentally friendly, and I think with the public comments, I've seen a couple of, couple of questions or concerns, nothing that I think is a deal breaker. I think it's just, I think that can be taken care of with the public, the, the final public session. And wow, I think, I think we should all be proud.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Peal.
I too have been hearing some feedback, and while it's much better than the original with the chairlift and the hotel, we are, we are getting there. I, I am hearing there's still some concerns about some of the activities, and so I, I do want to engage the public and really hear from them and, you know, see what we can do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Williams, do you have anything to add?
You betcha. Can you put the first slide up, please?
Yes, sir. You're talking this one, sir?
I'm sorry, you called it the first slide. Go back to where we see all the parking lots. That's what you called the first slide. I understand it's a concept. It's conceptual. But frankly, well before I got involved in politics, we were looking at concepts for the side of our only mountain. We have seen no less than three different versions to date. So I got some questions. Is the chairlift off the table in terms of discussion at this point?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, there is no additional chairlift programmed into these concepts, sir.
Are there any plans for a hotel motel or casita?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, there will absolutely be no plan for that. This will be a protected open space for the recreational program and that we're putting in there currently.
So no concept for campground?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, no, there is no campground, sir.
At recent Glassford Dell Steering Committees, I believe Mr. Davidson told the folks who showed up that the town was looking for a sliver of income to be generated by the regional park. Is there going to be a fee to use the park?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, we haven't got into that portion of the planning yet, sir. With it being conceptual, there is always that possibility of possibly charging for, you know, parking within there, just like they do with a lot of different trailheads. However, there's always the opportunity for the tourism aspects of what this regional park could do for us.
Well, as you know, we have some brilliant citizen activists, and the leader of the largest activist group has sent a letter to all of us council members saying, and I'll probably try to be brief, "The intent is to ensure a sustainable approach that based on careful environmental stewardship and thoughtful urban design that seamlessly integrates natural landscape with well-considered community-focused design elements." I'm not seeing it. I was a Boy Scout who hiked everywhere in this state, and I was a member of the Arizona Mountaineering Club. Let me ask you this. Won't the addition of numerous trails cause erosion, especially with mountain bikes?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, there definitely will be upkeep that will have to happen proactively within this park. Cutting in trails and just leaving them as is will never be a way that we will maintain anything that we, we take care of here in Prescott Valley. So erosion control will be a piece of the engineering as well as the construction of any of the trails that come into this area or any trails in any other area, sir.
Continuing with the activist letter, the conceptual design document depicts an abundance of constructed facilities that fall far short of the promise to seamlessly integrate into the natural landscape. Their opinion on, in the letter says there's too many parking lots. Well, actually, they didn't say that. Let me ask you to comment on what they said. Falling short of the promise to seamlessly integrate into the natural landscape.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Member, with the renderings and this high-level vision that we have in front of you today, we're making sure that as we get into our engineering phase, once this council has approved whatever our ultimate design will be, then we have aspects that will be able to engine, be engineered correctly. So then with our intent to seamlessly integrate these different aspects that have been programmed in, we'll have that opportunity after the council has approved it.
Well, if we're talking about natural landscape, then I have to inject my opinion. There's too many parking lots, too many ramadas, too many frisbee golf holes, too much astroturf, too many watering, water elements, and I don't think the presentation really covered those three water elements. Can you briefly describe those? We see them on the map.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Member, could you just clarify, are you talking about over there on the left-hand side with Water Smart Initiative type of items?
Oh, straight up the middle near the top, isn't that a splash pad or a series of splash pads?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, yes, sir. That is a splash pad that is programmed within this space. There are other elements within these concepts that are going towards all of our water conscious, conscious initiatives with low-impact landscaping. And then the possibilities after we get into an engineering phase, to be able to collect as much of that runoff rainwater and everything else that comes out of the sky to make sure that we can put it right back into this park or make sure that we're capturing it so then that, that water bed is right there to be able to take care of our plants.
The citizen letter goes on to say, "There is much about the conceptual plan that does not conform to the stated intention to preserve the natural environment." I guess I should give you a second to comment on that before I continue with the letter content.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Member, could, could you give me a little bit more so then I might be able to answer that question a little better?
We just read it back. "There's much about the conceptual plan that does not conform to the stated intention to preserve the natural environment."
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, within these concepts, as the Planning Center had talked about, 70 acres is about the amount of space that we're looking to implement, design and develop. Other than that, within the 1,800 acres that we're looking to put trail and other amenities within, that's the majority of it will be open space for all of those passive, passive activities that our residents have been asking for, sir.
Well, the letter is going to pick on you for use of massive because it says the conceptual plan shows eight constructed towers. It also shows that ropes course is surrounded by landscaping. Glassford Hill has no grown vegetation to camouflage any of this or integrate it into the landscape. Can you comment on the letters?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Member, with the ropes course being one of our highest-ranked community feedback items as an amenity to come into the park, it's programmed in there based off that citizen feedback for council to give us additional feedback on its incorporation. We have to be able to get the concept and that overall master plan taken care of, and then after that, be able to go into the engineering phase. The engineering may show that a ropes course out there will just absolutely not work, and if that's where it's at, then we'll go to the next item on the list from what our community is asking for or take the different direction, directive from our council on what you would like to see out there.
The letter from the largest citizen group's president says, "To plant and irrigate all of the landscaping shown on the conceptual plan would not be considered a sustainable approach."
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, with the Water Smart Initiatives that obviously we haven't been able to program completely into the concepts that you see on your screens right now, that, that is something that we are still sticking to and making sure that as we are able to move on to an engineering phase, then we'll be able to program that in appropriately where, where it's able to be taken care of.
The existence, the letter goes on to say, "The existence of towers indicates a high ropes course is being considered." Sources define a high ropes, ropes course as follows. Elevated above the ground, often built in trees or man-made structures like poles, courses are designed to challenge balance, strength, courage as they navigate obstacles at significant heights. The height can vary with some courses reaching up to 50 feet or more above the ground. High ropes courses often include elements such as zip lines, maybe that's out of the picture now, but also rope bridges, platforms, ladders, swinging logs, beams, popular for their adrenaline pumping experiences. We're not going to build Marine Camp Lejeune, are we?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, no, sir. We're not looking to build Camp Lejeune.
The mountain is for passive recreation. Are, are participants going to have to sign a waiver before being allowed to participate on a ropes course because of the high risk of injury?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, with, with an activity like that, you would absolutely need to do a waiver of liability, and that, that'll be something that we'll have to discuss and make sure that we're making the best decisions possible for once we get to that point.
Letter goes on to say, "Trained professionals in the art of first aid will have to oversee some courses at all times, providing guidance, support, and ensuring safety protocols are followed." Is this what the town has in mind?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, again, the renderings being conceptual and not having additional feedback due to not getting into an engineering phase yet and what actually will be out there, it, it's, it's hard to answer that question until we get to that phase. I will say as a Parks and Recreation professional, yes, first aid certified people will be on-site at a, an amenity like that.
So that's staff salaries. We'll have to hire staff. We'll have to require annual inspections, right?
Yes, sir.
We'll have to have a rider for the town's insurance policy, right?
We would absolutely need that, sir.
What is, do we have a funding source for this behemoth project in general and insurance liability in particular?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, we're investigating every opportunity for funding, whether it be general fund, grant funding, development impact fee funding, and anything and everything within there. As we get through this master planning conceptual piece of things and then we're able to start working on some of the engineering pieces and seeing what costs may be associated, we're still strategically planning for those years down the road and what funding we may be able to allocate to this project.
Can you go back to the disc golf layout? Can you go back to the disc golf layout slide? I'm so old, I may have more experience in disc golf than anybody in this town. I first encountered it when I was attending ASU in the 1970s. It was known as Frisbee Golf. Mr. Davidson will get a chuckle. Arizona State University was the first university in the country to offer physical education credits for Frisbee. Can you, so each disc golf hole requires a basic approach. You have to have a basket to land the disc in, right?
Yes, sir.
And they're about 63 inches tall, weighing 70 pounds, all steel, needing to go down into the earth two feet into concrete in order to keep them solid and vertical. And they cost a hundred bucks. So I'm envisioning a materials truck driving all over God's creation with several pounds, maybe a half ton or more of materials that have to go all over the side of that mountain. Did you envision something like that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Council, for the implementation of the disc golf course, being able to take concrete in sack form and transport it around, as you had said, sir, the baskets are a smaller aspect of the disc golf course. Two to three sacks and being able to put a sleeve in in different locations utilizing a UTV makes the process much better than trying to drive a large materials truck or a concrete mixing truck out there or anything like that. Working through all those different hurdles after we have got an ultimate concept and approved concept is what we'll get into in our planning once we get to that point.
Well, just my opinion for what it's worth, the overall concept design is not passive recreation. I think it's what some want to be a generator of tourism dollars. Thank you.
Councilman Greer.
I want to thank you for this. I think it is a very thoughtful plan. You've considered recycling water. You considered all of these things. And I think the disc golf course solves the problem that many people have where it exists today. It's a very small amount of acreage on a very large piece of land, and it provides some wonderful recreation for the people who live here, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman McKeel.
I just wanted to follow up on the, when Councilmember Williams was asking about the ropes course and at the Glassford Dell Steering Committee meetings, I thought that the ropes course was going to be self-guided activities. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Councilmember, I can't comment to that right now. I don't have a recollection of it. I can definitely take a look back. With the ropes course and its abundance of responses through the survey, that's how it was programmed in there. Most ropes courses are not self-guided. And if we are approved for the ultimate concept with a high ropes course, you know, an activity course or something like that, then we'll be able to go down that path of how that will be engineered at that time, ma'am.
Thank you. And also, I'll just throw in there with the mention of disc golf. It has been a concern of mine as well. And I have asked Gilbert Davidson multiple times repeatedly, ongoing, that this course will be near no people, no houses, no pathways. It will be self-contained, and that's it. So, and he has assured me that that's the location.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Schumacher.
I also wanted to say thank you very much for this presentation. And I know that, I know my limits of what I can and cannot do. So I think this is an amazing thing. I think there's so many doctors out there that are going to say, great, people are getting more exercise by going here, doing the things that they are able to do. I have disc golf discs that I've bought that I haven't had a time to utilize yet. So I'm looking forward to learning how to play. I know there's been a lot of contention with Grandville area having the disc golf and that this is going to be moved to this place, which is wide open without the houses. I think that'll be a phenomenal thing to do. I think the amount of parking space is something to pre-plan for the future. And I do think when we have other activities that may come up in the future time, we'll need that place for parking. So I appreciate having the parking as well because if I also want to go from one item to another, I might want to go back to my car to move my car. So then I'm not walking as far. The only thing I would like to see is on the trails, if we could incorporate somehow how many steps people have taken by utilizing them because I like to get in 10,000 steps a day. But if I'm doing 20, I really would like to know that as well. So I think this is an amazing plan. It's something for the future. It's going to take quite a while to get it to develop to this point. It's going to take quite a while to integrate all the plants that we need, which will stop erosion, which have their own features. We'll have more lizards most likely, but that could be a good thing. I can just see how this is going to be used in the future. Last Friday, I was able to drive on Jasper Parkway because the gates were open and the person I was with decided to go through. There was over 50 people walking on that new street already. And that was just in our drive to the one end and to the back. So I'm thinking, we didn't get to see how many people had been there that day. That was in a 20-minute span of time that I saw 50 people out there enjoying that space. So it hasn't even opened yet, you know? So I can see how this is going to be a major deal to have this come through. And it'll be a great tribute to our town that we had the foresight now to plan it for our future. So I'm excited about everything. And I don't know about the ropes thing. Maybe I'll try it, maybe I won't, you know? But I think that people know their own limitations. I would hope that parents are responsible enough for what their children are able to be let loose on to. But, you know, I say that with skate parks and everything else. There's going to be something that somebody may or may not of capability be able to do. But that's how it is with bicycle riding or anything else we take on. So I just want to say thank you so much. I think this has great foresight. I appreciate all the people that did put their input in on this, that were on the committees, that gave their input. And for the future, that like you said, we're going back to the public to say what else. And I think we need the verandas. We need to be able to get out of the weather like it, you know, snowed today. So I think it's nice to have the parking space where you could run back to your car or the verandas. And thank you for the bathrooms because that's something I need to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to say thank you to you and the Planning Center and also the community for just all their work on this thus far. With regard to the ropes course, even the pump track, and maybe this better question for the Planning Center, is there any places around the state that we can actually visit to see something like this?
Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor Council, can you clarify for me? Are you looking at just like a ropes course or?
I'd love to see something like this in action in a public park. Absolutely.
Sure, absolutely. We could definitely pull together some information for you and get that over to you, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sir, I just want to just say and reiterate, this is going to be years in the making. This isn't something that's happening overnight. So we all need to keep that in mind. And in reference to the ropes course, I don't know if anyone's been a great wolf. They do a ropes course indoors, which is about 12 feet off the ground, and kids love it. So there's no need for kids to be climbing or anyone to be climbing, you know, super heights, which apparently some people think this is going to be, for this to be enjoyed by the public. And much like how you do a master plan community that has commercial and single-family, small homes, apartments, a wide variety of housing. It might not be for everyone, right? Like someone might not want to live in an apartment, but they want to live in a larger home. This is no different than that. It's a park that's going to have a wide variety of things that is going to address what you said. This isn't just for one demographic. We did a survey. We have a wide range of individuals who are going to utilize a park. Lots of people currently like to use fishing in our community, right? They go to the fishing holes. I want nothing to do with fishing, right? I don't know how Joe does it up there. But it's still important because it's important to people like Joe who like to go fishing. So if it's important to other people, it's important to me. So that's the same with this park concept. You have individuals who want nothing to happen on the hill. And you've, quite frankly, have those areas where people can go and just kind of sit around and do nothing. Then on the other hand, there's a destination for families to show up. And I think that's the key thing on what we need to think about. This is a park. Not one idea is the best idea. And we're just going to take in what people's thoughts are. And I think you gathered it here with this. The planning team, you guys did a great job. This is going to bring, you can call it passive, you can call it semi-active, you can call it whatever, but you can call it fun because it's going to have families getting out of the house and doing things and making memories. And that's important with a park.
Yes, sir.
That being said, I have nothing else to add. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
And with that being said, I apologize to council. I have to leave. Vice Mayor will be taking over.
All right. Hold on. The next item on the agenda is item 2E, update Prescott Valley Water Resources Policy Initiatives. Tracy, take it away.
Vice Mayor Council, it's a pleasure to see you today. And we're talking today about, going to give you an update of where we're at with a lot of our water resources strategies. It's been a little while since we've updated you. So I wanted to make sure that we go through what we're up to. And we're up to a lot. So Happy Water Awareness Month. So in the spirit of that, we're here today to discuss what we've been up to and what we have planned in the near future. And just kind of give you, to frame this a little bit, I'll have Mr. Davidson give you kind of the spirit with which we started this initiative a couple of years ago.
Mr. Mayor, members of the, or Vice Mayor, members of the council. And picking up on Ms. Lund's intro there, we started several years ago, really starting to take a step back and rethink Prescott Valley's water strategies. And it started with identifying kind of what are we trying to achieve? And there were three goals that really stood out as part of our review of the overall situation. First is balancing our aquifer. We are overdrafting the aquifer. The whole region is, not just Prescott Valley, but the whole region is overdrafting the aquifer. And we need to take that seriously. And so we wanted to make sure that was front and center as one of our goals in everything that we do. And there's two parts to that goal. First is making sure that we find permanent water that we're putting back into the aquifer. Permanent meaning that we will not use it for growth. It goes back to Mother Nature. And, but we also at the same time need to have water for economic development and opportunities for our future. And that's that second goal of securing our economy. You know, we can't, if you crash the economy, if you stop the economy and don't have opportunities for future job growth and investment in the community, you will not have investment in water protection. So it's really important that we balance all of those needs. And the final piece that rounded this out was we want to protect what makes living in this community so special, our quality of life. The open spaces, the parks that we just talked about, you know, all the other things that make living in this community so special. And again, that takes water. All of it takes water. So these were our three goals that we laid out when we started talking about our overall water management plan, which is our next slide. So this, which is now a couple of years old, we've accomplished a large number of these different items on the overall plan. And, but I just, you know, it's broken up into four pieces. I'm not going to go through all of these. We'd be here forever. But, you know, it started with doing planning. The town needed to do some really good, long-range planning about where we're at with our current water resources and what the future holds. And so there's a whole list of things and strategies that were a part of that. Partnerships are absolutely critical in this realm. You know, you need not only regional partners, we need to be working closely with the city of Prescott, with Chino, with the county, with Dewey-Humboldt. All of us need to be aligning together. And we've been working very hard on conversations and partnerships on that front. But beyond our region, we have to have strong relationships at the state level with state agencies that regulate water and also with the Salt River Project. Salt River Project has enormous interests in northern Arizona. And if they're not at the table with us and they're not in alignment with us, we will never get anywhere. So we have worked very, very hard, our entire team, to really begin to build and strengthen those partnerships. And I think we've done some amazing things. We have many projects that we're working on on the waterfront. Projects was that next area. So these are physical things that we're doing, whether it's PFAS remediation. Tracy's going to highlight some of our recharge opportunities. And then the final piece were policies. So there's all the levers that we can move up or down to effectuate how people behave with water. And we've been doing a whole bunch on that front. We've had some, you know, I think groundbreaking ones. We were one of the first in the state to literally tell apartment complexes, guess what? You're not getting free water. You, if you're going to come to Prescott Valley, you're going to pay for the water. That is a loophole in state law. State law allows unsubdivided units to just not have to purchase and bring water to the table. We took a stand and did something about that. So I'm really proud of all the things. We have a lot more work to do. We are far from where we want to be with this, but we've made some great inroads. And I'll turn it back over to Tracy to highlight some of the specific things.
Well, and I will say, there are a couple of updates on this, just so you're aware, a couple of, especially partnerships. Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe was on there before. They are a key partner in some of our initiatives that we're talking about, including one we'll be talking about briefly. And this is, to my thinking, this is not even an exhaustive list of what we've been doing the last three years since I arrived here. And some of the things that I want to talk about that we're doing today have only come about because I have assistants now. So in the last year, I have gotten a lovely gentleman to help me with many of these initiatives. And so we're able to accomplish even more. And it's very exciting. But I wanted to start with kind of the rating on the parade, if you will, just to remind you. So the pumping in the Prescott Active Management Area has been going on for decades, right? This is not, the overdraft of our aquifer is not something that just happened last week. This has been something that has accrued over the course of time. It will take time to address it. The water uses in the Prescott AMA have essentially been unchanged since 1960s and 70s. The uses of that water that we've been overdrafting have changed, certainly. And even the pumping centers have changed over time. But the important salient point is we are overdrafting the aquifer, and it's been that way for decades because it's driven legislation. And as you all know, it takes a lot of effort to drive legislation. And so the evidence for this was clear very early in the 60s and 70s even. There, I've read some of the accounts for this particular area. Now, what I'm going to be talking about today isn't going to address everything, the overdraft overnight. This is just us being better stewards of the resource, right? So this first thing that we're going to talk about, So, this first thing that we're going to talk about, effluent recharge, is just us getting water back into the aquifer that we have used. So, and this is kind of a follow-up to an earlier discussion that we had on this when it comes to expansion of recharge operations. So, we need to maximize the amount of effluent we can get into the aquifer. That means with our really tight clay soils, that we need to expand the footprint of area that we are using to get water into the aquifer. That essentially means that in order to protect the water quality in our drinking water wells that are in the central and north wellfields, we need to be very careful about where we expand our operations. And what I'm going to show you will, should do that. And we're going to be going through the permit modification process for this expansion with this next fiscal year. So, there'll be budget considerations for you as well on this particular topic. So, talking about our current operations, because obviously we need to know what we're doing before we talk about how we're going to be expanding those operations. We have two places where we can send our effluent to actually recharge the aquifer. To the north, we have the North Plains Recharge Ponds. We send about 400 acre feet to North Plains every year. That is as much as we can actually get into the aquifer there, given the clay soils. We also have the lion's share of our water that we can recharge that goes to the Agua Fria River Facility. It's a two and a quarter mile long stretch of the Agua Fria River that we actually are able to send water directly from our wastewater plant downstream through that facility. My, our aim is actually to expand that facility about eight miles by actually sending that water to Mountain Valley Park. And we already send our reclaimed water there to fill the ponds. With this plan, we would simply let those ponds overflow for at least half-time to actually utilize that entire stretch of the Lake Shore Wash and the Agua Fria River downstream from there. That would connect in with our current facility. And then hopefully, and this is the gray area here, we're not sure exactly how far we will be able to negotiate with ADWR to include in our facility, but it could go as far as Bradshaw Mountain Road. And that would then allow us, eight miles, to get as much of our recharge into the aquifer and get credit for that from ADWR. And, you know, we're not entirely sure exactly how much we would, additional recharge we would be able to get credit for. That's highly dependent on the modeling. That will need to happen in the next year with our permit process. So, that is one of the things that we will be doing. Now, I know in the previous discussions that we talked about using the well that we have drilled in Mountain Valley Park to actually inject directly into the aquifer. I also brought up the possibility of sending all of this water to Granville to actually use the entire stretch of the Agua Fria River. The problem here that we're running into is the PFAS. So, by injecting it directly into the aquifer, we are then injecting PFAS-laden water directly into the aquifer. Same thing with Granville. It's very close to our central wellfield, so we want to be very careful on a source water protection perspective to not be doing that. This, this stretch is already being impacted by our effluent potentially. So, we wouldn't be creating new problems by expanding this facility. Switching gears a little bit, I wanted to talk about stormwater recharge because this is a really new and exciting aspect to what we're doing. Obviously, we get stormwater, we get through both snow, like what we got today, and rain. And for a large rainfall event, that water is just roaring down creeks, roaring down washes, and causing flooding in some areas and erosion in a lot of places as well. So, if we can slow down that stormwater without causing additional flooding in new areas and actually building conveyances that will actually enhance infiltration in our aquifer, then we can actually get the aquifer to benefit. But of course, we need to be conscious of downstream water rates. So, we would, we'll be, we've already run some calculations to try to tease out optimal sizes for recharge facilities that would actually help us to infiltrate stormwater. We want to make sure that we get the water closest to the source of that stormwater. So, one of the ways that we can do that and minimize potential for pollution to come into that stormwater before we infiltrate it is to set up some of our larger buildings here in town, get that stormwater off the roof, into gutters, and into French trains. This would then allow for infiltration of water into our aquifer and then get that water off the surface and introduce the opportunity for it to recharge our aquifer. We have a current grant right now that is going into, at the moment, there's design going on for the wheelhouse, the police department, and the library buildings. Will be, then, we're hoping to get those designs back from engineering this summer, and then we will immediately move into construction phase. The wheelhouse will be the first to be going in. We're, this is one of our ways that we are partnering with Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe. Partial to this grant is constructing two of these facilities onto tribal buildings as well. So, we're fostering some really good regional relationships with this particular project. But we also have a really exciting project for recharge in a larger, kind of a larger way. And this is a pilot that is going to be on the books for not only just Prescott Valley and help us to design and inform other projects here in town, but it's also garnering statewide attention as well. So, what we would be doing is installing these devices that you see in the picture to actually speed up infiltration speed into the aquifer. These can increase the hydraulic conductivity of this clay, these clay sediments by a factor of 10. So, it's very exciting. Why is that so exciting? Because we live in a desert. And frankly, you know, evaporation is an immense force here. If we don't get that water as deep as we can, as quickly as we can, we may lose that water and that opportunity to get that water into the aquifer to evaporation. So, get it as quick, done as quickly as possible, the better off we're going to be. And we have committed, or at least I've committed, I'm hoping that you will also commit to all of the recharge that we get from these facilities going to safe yield. So, not used for development. So, very exciting. We're going to be doing, undoing some of the damage that we've imparted on our own aquifer. Now, of course, we need to be conscious of the fact that, you know, we're getting this water out of waterways that would potentially be going downstream and impacting surface water rights. There was, we were here a few months ago talking about urban enhanced runoff in calculation of that. That is actually, those calculations are part and parcel with this. So, we designed these facilities to actually only capture the amount of water that is not someone else's water. So, this is a very exciting thing. We're, we're working on partnerships and funding for this project. So, stay tuned for that. We're not quite at the point where we're going to be coming to you for authorization. We are, just so you're aware, the large meter AMI replacement is right on track. We're about a quarter of the way done, somewhere quarter and 30% done. We have about 3,500 more meters, meter transmitters to swap. Again, we have a $2.1 million grant. We're working on that right now. We have until June 30th of 2026 to spend all of those monies. What that will do is when we get that project fully implemented, that will give access to all of our customers, that WaterSmart portal, and being able to look at your near-real-time water use and judge for yourself whether or not you have a leak in your system. And it also gives opportunities for conservation to folks who are, who can fully explore the app. I'm really excited about this because like I said, I've got somebody helping me. I'm so excited. He's done a great job with helping me with outreach. We're able to, we've done several meetings, talking to adults and children. We were recently at SciTech Fest over at Embry-Riddle. Brian has talked to our, a couple, at least one scout troop in the area. I've had the opportunity to talk with business leaders, area realtors, the OSHA Lifelong Learning Initiative. I was able to give them a talk as well. But I'm especially proud of the Water Academy. That was a four-week extravaganza of water, and I think it went really well. We did a lot of things, we, it was a tour of a wealth site. Really fun stuff happened there. It was, it was, it was great fun. And that's in addition to, we're doing a lot of social media, town news articles. We're, we're still doing Citizens Academy tours of the wastewater plant. We'll be doing one later this month. We're participating in local workshops. Councilwoman Keel was one of the folks that was involved in that. And fostering through that workshop, some, some great relationships in the area as well. And wastewater plant and recharge facility YouTube videos. We're interactive, man. We're out there. And we're continuing to be out there. I have big plans. So, for instance, later this month, I'll be talking to the Quailwood HOA. We've got Citizens Academy. I'll be having another Water Academy in August. I think I've got a full class already. We're just planning a neighborhood social event blitz, the YCCA home show, I'll be at that. And, you know, we're expanding our website, doing some conservation content, and just continuing our media presence everywhere. We're always looking for more opportunities to get the word out on water and conservation. Which brings me to the water conservation plan. We don't currently have one, and that is a problem. We do need to address that. So, it's budgeted in the next fiscal year, and we're going to assess what we're doing currently, what we can do to change. And looking at potential incentive programs, costing them out, kind of comparing the different incentive programs, ranking by cost per acre foot, what is the most efficacious for our housing stock, for our clientele, and just really, really hitting it hard, making sure that we have a good program that outlines what funding needs are going to have to be addressed to implement that. And we'll document all of this for the ADWR fit management plan for the Prescott AMA. And before I wanted to wrap up here, I thought we'd bring up the Big Chino Water Ranch. We are getting near the end of the modeling stage. So, the model that, for the pumping essentially and scenario running for the Big Chino Basin, and it does incorporate that entire area that you see here in the map, all the way past Seligman. That model is actually in final stages of refinement, and they're doing an uncertainty analysis to make sure that they fully understand, that is, that we fully understand what, what that model can and cannot do. And we'll be using that model to run scenarios, climate scenarios, build-out scenarios, and Paulden, and determining what affects the headwaters flow. And of course, the objective here is to not affect the headwaters flow. We do, however, as acknowledged by ADWR, we will need to import water into the Prama in order to address safe yield. That is something that, that they've acknowledged for at least 30 years that I can tell. So, this is, this is going to be an important step. It's going to be an expensive step, but I think it is important to ensure our water security here. And of course, money. Sorry, guys, I've got to talk about my money. So, we're going to be doing another water rate study here in the next year or two. It'll assess the funding needs that are necessary for PFAS operations. It'll discuss budget needs for our aging infrastructure. Obviously, we need to be able to keep up with that. It'll address future staffing needs potentially and operations needs as well. But it is dependent on, of course, the currently ongoing wastewater treatment plant master plan. So, we'll be doing the rate study, starting to think about the rate study probably in about February or March of next year. And, you know, this is kind of the cleanup slide, future water policy considerations. Obviously, funding options are needed to ensure that eventually we can reach safe yield. Think about additional stormwater recharge projects, Big Chino Pipeline, what needs to happen there. If we're going to be doing upgrades to address PFAS at the wastewater treatment plant, what would that entail funding-wise? Or do we go to direct potable reuse, which is even more expensive? So, we need to be thinking about those as we move forward. Obviously, every year, we think about water rights purchases. We're constantly strafing for those opportunities as well. And an ongoing thing that is actually, I believe, in the design phase right now, the bulk water fill station, which will eventually replace all of our hydrant pumps, hydrant meters that are currently out there, is in design phase at the moment. And I will say that last time I was before you all, I heard what was being said with the landscaping changes. So, we are actually going to be, I believe, addressing some of those issues in June. I am a part of those discussions on the water side. But Development Services is the driving force there. So, I know I'll be roped into those discussions as well. So, just, that's essentially the update that I have for you today. Obviously, I can take questions from you all.
All right, I'll start on my left hand. Councilmember Schumacher.
I know that when we partnered with Prescott over the Big Chino Water Reservoir, that they had majority stakeholders, I believe, right, or partnership of?
They have 54%, and we have 46%.
And then, don't we have to still wait until they make the first move for us to be able to go forward?
It would be a partnership between us all, and yes. So, that's, it's very dependent on them. And yes, but we, you know, obviously, so it's an ongoing discussion from both sides.
Was something that was voted on on prior councils, so, because I never would have agreed to that. But just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Councilmember Keel.
And with Prescott, the voters would have to approve anything over, I believe, 40,000, or 40 million.
Yes, indeed. They do have rules on the books where that would have to go to their voters, yes.
And I also want to say, thank you. It's been a pleasure taking your classes, and I really appreciate you getting the word out and educating, you know, the community. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Frank.
Thank you. There was mention of bulk water purchases. And as I think, I'm sure you're aware, a lot of private wells in neighboring areas, especially in the county like Coyote Springs, for example, are going dry. The first part of my question is, is anybody accurately documenting these things, like mapping them? And so that we can see a pattern of where these are going dry? And then the second part of that question is, as these things, as this becomes critical, like as a drought continues, let's say, and these, and these continue to go dry, there's going to be more demand for water, bulk water trucks bringing, come and taking our water and bringing it out to these outlying areas? Is there any thought about a policy on that?
Vice Mayor Council, I will say that at this point, that's not something that we've discussed. But yes, I think that's of valid concern. And I think, you know, when it comes to who's looking at this, I'm not sure that there is anyone looking at this at this point, at least with a scientific, you know, scientifically addressing this. Now, just to illustrate though, there are a number of reasons why wells go dry. And some of those wells may be old enough that the aquifer that it penetrated, you know, when it was drilled, is not adequate anymore, given that all of their neighbors also have wells. That's the problem is that, you know, if your straw going into the aquifer is next to somebody else's straw going into the aquifer, you're essentially competing for that same water body. So, you know, aquifer conditions can change. And, you know, that's, that's, you know, scientifically, I can tell you that, you know, it doesn't just take a large-volume well to interfere with a small well. They can interfere with each other.
Thank you. I think that the wells going dry and the bulk water sales to these people is going to be the 700-pound gorilla in your office.
I would agree. I think it is something that, like I said, I think we're going to have to think about that. It might be that that's going to end up having to drive some of our decisions about pricing for bulk water. Just dropping that into the pool at this point. But yeah, we'll, we'll be talking about that going forward.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Searcher. First time I had to say that.
Thank you, Tracy, and
Thank you, Tracy and Neil and others for your hard work. I've often bragged about your department. I wrote down a bunch of chicken scratch here, and I hope I can read my own notes. You have been generous with your time with me. I think you, Neil, Mr. Davidson, and I have spent more than three hours together, you guys teaching me, plus the Citizens Academy. So I thank you for that. I do believe Neil, with Jacobs Engineering, will get the PFAS problem solved. No pressure, Neil, but you're on your way. But could you take a moment to discuss how big the challenge is of putting cleaned, clean water PFAS-free over into that injection well way out east, possibly near the water treatment plant? It's got to be a massive undertaking just to get it out and then inject it?
So essentially, so when I, sorry, Vice Mayor, Council. When I first came on board, that well was, we were just starting to, to design the infrastructure, or at least contemplate designing the infrastructure to support that well. We then found that the PFAS was in our affluent, and affluent and affluent. I think, and I'm going to have to probably defer to Neil, because I cannot remember what the numbers were for design, for design, engineering, and operations of that, you know, the PFAS treatment for, just for the well.
Yeah, so the, the well that you're talking about, we're looking at a capacity of about 300 gallons a minute, which is not a lot. You know, we have wells that produce thousands of gallons a minute, 500 gallons a minute, but 300 is very low. The cost just to equip that one well with PFAS treatment that comes from, treated effluent from the wastewater treatment plant, capital costs were anticipated to be probably about $10 million. The overall operating cost over a 20-year lifecycle, we're looking at possibly $20 million just for that. So it's really not economical. Treating effluent is something that is not as tried and true. In fact, it's more cutting-edge than on the potable water side. And ultimately, it's probably going to be cheaper to have that type of treatment at the wastewater treatment plant, more of a centralized treatment. But again, looking down the road, just for something for our plant, we are talking about potentially $100 million, $150 million to ultimately get to affluent that, if we're talking ultimately, say, direct potable reuse. It's going to be a lot of money, but probably $20 million lifecycle cost just for the, the small recharge well that, that you were talking about.
Thank you both. I want to ask Mr. Davidson something. Someone once said, "At some point in time, Prescott Valley will pay whatever it takes to provide clean drinking water to the citizens." Can you talk to that philosophy?
Well, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Williams, I think that's a Arizona and a Western states' challenge. I think, you know, I've been for, I've grown up, born and raised in Arizona. Water is a hot topic everywhere. And if you look at the investments that have been made in this state with the help of the federal government to bring water from the Colorado River down into the Phoenix region, and all through Pinal County and down to Tucson, it's billions of dollars have been invested in that. And just, just by the federal government, and it's, you know, the, the ongoing maintenance and the water right issues. And so this isn't, you know, water is going to be, and has to be, it's a life-giving thing. So we are taking, obviously, very seriously. We want to be smart with our dollars, and I think that you've seen where we've come back and rethought something. So rather than go and equip a well that only has, you know, produces 300 gallons a minute, could we have a bigger bang for our buck by, you know, having an alternate-type project? So we're always going to be looking for those opportunities. But water is going to be expensive. And I, you know, I think that there is no magic, you know, solution to this. So as we think about importation of water, and that has been a big issue, and I know our community has, is worried about growth, well, if we don't want a lot more growth to pay for the water resource, then that means all of us have to be at the table and part of the conversation on how do we protect our water resources? And then ultimately, how much are all of us going to have to pay to make sure that we've got a sustainable water resource for the future?
Thanks for that answer, and thanks again to, to you, Neil, Tracy, and the others for the incredible, hard work.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And Tracy, you mentioned the Water Smart Program. I just want to highlight, I received an email about a week ago saying I might have a leak, and sure enough, I just had to adjust something in the toilet, one of the toilets. So I just want to say that that is working, and I want to commend that program.
Excellent, yeah, we're very excited about it and trying desperately to get everyone signed up, because it is such a great, great tool.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, item 2F, Stormwater Program Briefing.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Council. I've met some of you. For those of you who haven't, I am the Stormwater Coordinator for the town. I'm here to talk to you briefly about our stormwater program, give you updates on what we're doing, our initiatives, and how we are using that stormwater fee. Just to give a brief background, the reason that we have this stormwater program is because the government, the federal government created the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, also known as the NPDES, under the Clean Water Act. This requires stormwater discharges from certain types of urbanized areas to be permitted. In 1987, Congress passed the Section 402P of that Clean Water Act to bring stormwater into the NPDES program. In 1990, the EPA issued Phase 1 stormwater rules, and this was expanded in 1999 to bring on Phase 2, which is what Prescott Valley is. It just means that we are a smaller town, made up of about 50,000 residents. The ADQ implemented the NPDES program on behalf of the EPA through that, the Arizona Pollution Discharge Elimination System. This requires permit holders to create and implement comprehensive stormwater pollution plans and drainage management plans. So that's essentially the focus of the Stormwater Management Plan, pollution and drainage management. So with that being said, we do have our permit, which is also located on our website, as well as our whole stormwater management program. So with that program, we have six minimum control measures, and this is kind of the guideline of our program. The concepts of that is public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction activities, stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management in new and in redevelopment, as well as pollution prevention and good housekeeping. And I'll get into that in the following slides. So this is kind of the, the general outline of those six minimum control measures. For the public education and outreach side of it, we utilize brochures in our webpage as well as press releases. It kind of outlines what the goal is, how we plan to meet that goal, and when we started that goal in our target date. For public involvement and participation, we hold meetings. I just held a meeting a few weeks ago for stormwater stakeholders, and I kind of introduced the same management program to them. We ask for public involvement. On our website, we have an area for the public to comment on our stormwater program, and we also ask for public participation. We soon hope to utilize a volunteer-based initiative that I'll get more into in a little For the illicit discharge detection and elimination section of the program, we do stormwater sewer mapping, which is found on our GIS, outlines all of our storm drains and outfalls. We implement an IDDE enforcement program where we work with code enforcement. We utilize our inspectors to identify any illicit discharges seen throughout the town. We also conduct training with town staff members of various departments, and we do visual monitoring as well as illicit discharge elimination, where we just follow up on, on, I'm sorry, I can't think, on issues that have been brought to our attention. Construction site stormwater runoff control. We, we review SWIP plans before the construction sites break ground. We try to implement and ensure that they use the correct BMPs and stormwater runoff controls within those sites. We conduct inspections. We do site plan reviews and education and public involvement. Before construction sites break down or break ground, I speak with those contractors. I give them a copy of the inspection plan that I intend to use. I give them a copy of the BMPs that they should be utilizing within their site. And post-construction stormwater management, we do a runoff control assessment. We ensure that any temporary BMPs are removed prior to development being completed. We also conduct regular inspections of that, as well as take inventory, and that includes introducing it into our GIS. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. We conduct ourselves in the same way we expect our residents to. We do inspections of our own municipal facilities. This includes parks, the civic center, any other areas that the town owns and operates. We also do inspections, training, and look for discharge, or we provide discharge elimination. So we, we have our own BMPs in place. This includes catch basins, swales, waddles, anything that's required. So utilizing our CI, our stormwater fee, it funds our stormwater management program. It supports the infrastructure upgrades and enhancements, as well as covers maintenance and upkeep of the systems. So some of the capital improvement projects we have done is the Fourth Street Drainage in Quailwood, which is just about complete, I believe. A future project that we are looking at is the Lake Shore Drainage Stabilization. There are two areas along Lake Shore that we're looking at. I know one intersection is Towago, where, as you can see from the photos, that it is, there's a lot of erosion there. The plan is to utilize the same type of riprap that we use at the Quailwood, as you can see in the pictures above, and just kind of mitigate some of that erosion. And as I had mentioned, we have a volunteer-based green infrastructure initiative that I'm really excited to do. With that, we are going to take inventory of an area of the town and create a rain garden, a bio swale, and just utilize the help of the volunteers of the residents here. So low overhead and, you know, just help beautify the town. On our operations end, we do a lot of ditch re-establishment. We send rock letters if needed. We do driveway work, removing the culverts, cleaning them out, and replacing them. We also look at the size of those culverts. I know we moved to a minimum of 15 inches, so if they are undersized, I believe we take a look at that and upsize it if we can. Proactive maintenance, a really exciting thing that we have done this year. We have got caught up on most of our work orders, and we have been able to be a little bit more proactive in some of the flooding areas. So our operations team is currently working, it's behind Roberts Market in that area, and looking at those areas. They sent the rock letters, and they're going to start digging here next week, I believe. We help with CIP work. They regraded the ditch there at Powers and Robert Road where they had just installed the safety improvements to help with that, to avoid any infrastructure problems in the future from the, from erosion. And we also conduct training. We send our guys to traffic control. We train them on the equipment, as well as stormwater and erosion information. We also conduct inspections. This includes construction. We look at all new builds, including residential and commercial. Anything over an acre has more stringent requirements, including the SWIP. But all sites are subject to BMPs and erosion control. We also take a look at illicit discharges. These inspections stem mostly from visible discharges brought to us by residents, or any complaints that are called in or entered in through our work order system. And this is only due to effective public education campaigns. We take a look at our outfalls and monitoring points. We have a requirement to look at, to conduct a dry weather screen visually, inspecting 20% of our outfalls a year. We also have wet weather monitoring, where we have to do two inspections a year per wet season at a minimum, and that's during a rainy, a rain event. So we look at first flush, which is 30 minutes after a rain event. So some stormwater solutions that we have been doing, we conduct street sweeping, which we have six full sweeps a year, 285 total miles of curb and gutter. We have a mowing and spraying program. We own, we mow town-owned properties and easements. We spray town-owned property and easements as well, as well as the regional collaboration. Our stormwater program is part of the Northern Arizona MS4 Collaborative, which includes Chino Valley, the county, gosh, Cotton Woods, Adona Flagstaff. So we all come together once a month to talk about our minimum control measures, how we're addressing them, and see what we can do, either together or see if one solution work, that's working for one town can work for another as well. I was part of the Growing Water Smart Group, which included other departments of the town, and it allowed us, as a stormwater group, a new group, to collaborate and get involved more with planning and the water advisory group, and just come together on solutions that we have been working on separately, but try to figure out a more collaborative way to do that. We are part of the Vision 2024 Stormwater Management Goal Team, as well as the, I guess, Town and Prescott Water Advisory Team, which is, kind of, Tracy hit that a little bit ago. With that being said, that concludes my presentation. Would you guys, do you guys have any questions?
Any councilmembers have any questions? Councilmember Keel.
I just want to thank you for everything that you're doing that's allowing you to be more proactive and, and, you know, address, address the concerns in the stormwater, and I had a good time with you at the Water Smart Conference.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And I just want to say, one of the things I see when I'm out and about in town on a daily basis is the cleaning of the culverts. And I can't tell you how much I know, you know, neighbors and homeowners appreciate that, because in a rain event, a major rain event, that will help the water flow and not flood, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else? All right, seeing none.
Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, we adjourned.